The meeting is called to order. The meeting is called to order. The item, first one, is electronic participation by a school board member. Is there a motion to approve that? I have talked to the school board members. They have the, within the bounds of our policies, permission to participate electronically.
I moved, go ahead.
I moved. Ross, Dr. Day.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mrs. Preston and Mr. Jalil. I'm, both could be able to join online. All right, next one is pledge of allegiance. Dr. Day.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Next one is approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Amendment before?
Well, yeah, I do, I, I want to make a motion that we move item N2 to a future meeting. This was about the PPEA and since we do have a quorum here, but we don't have the full board. So we felt it was important for the full board to be here for that. So we want to postpone the discussion of that to a meeting in the future. The motion is to make that amendment to the agenda.
That would be item N3.
Three.
And three.
Oh, N3? Oh, okay. All right, so it was in, let me find it here. Oh, blah, blah, blah.
The PPA item is moving.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a second to that motion? Mrs. Laurie? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I don't, Mr. Jalil is on?
I don't think, I don't, I didn't see him.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
If you're there, you're muted, Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Oh, good, thank you.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Dr. Edwards has one more. I'm going to propose another amendment to the agenda. That we move the word language textbook adoption for information instead of the 16th, right?
Yes.
To tonight, because that's the only item we have for the 16th work session.
Perfect.
And it's only for information. So I'd like to make that motion if there's a second to that motion.
I'll second that.
Dr. Day, second that motion. Madam Clerk, would you, and let me just make that, so in that, with moving this item to from 16th to tonight, then we don't need a works, we don't have any items, right? So do we need to have a motion to cancel that work session or is it automatic? How does it work?
I would probably make a motion just to be honest.
Why don't we deal with this motion first?
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Excuse me, Dr. Carter. Mrs. Preston. Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Laurie. Yes.
So this becomes item N3. Yes, ma'am.
We did, Laurie, thank you.
Now I'll make the motion to approve the agenda and then we do the cancellation of.
Yeah, because that's not on the, that's not the agenda, so. Okay, so go ahead and we'll approve the agenda.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I second it.
Mr. Charles, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston. Yes. Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Excellence in Science Scholarship.
Now, did you want to do something about the meeting on the 16th officially?
I thought I'll do it as part of cheer comment, but if you want to make a motion.
Or we can do it when we get down to the informational items.
What's the pleasure?
Let's do it now.
We can do it now.
Go ahead and do it now. I move that we cancel the meeting on the 16th.
Is there a second?
Second.
No, I do miss you. These are my buddies here, so.
And I'm assuming there won't be any discussion.
Maybe you should explain though.
So.
Well, the city council is having a budget hearing that same evening and, and there's also an NAACP meeting that evening that, that is related to our issues as well. So we felt that both of those things are things that board members may very well want to attend. And so we're trying to clear our schedule for that evening so board members can go to those.
And both are school board related events. They are happening at the same time at 6:00 PM at two different parts of City of Lynchburg. So we'll divide up, divvy up among ourselves who'll be there. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston. Mrs. Preston.
She's muted.
We'll come back to her.
She's trying to mute.
Mrs. Preston, you're there? I think we lost her. She went off the signal. You can move along.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie. I am now. It looks like somebody else was.
Go ahead, we were looking for your vote on.
We're voting on canceling the meeting on April 16th. Do you have a vote?
Yes. Motion carries. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is E1, Excellence in Science Scholarship. Dr. Edwards.
Sure, one of my favorite events of all times, the Excellence in Science Scholarship, which is funded in part by the Education Foundation. And Ms. Dawn Wise is here to reveal our winner. I apologize, I've got a scratchy throat, so I might have to like drink my water. But anyway, good evening, Chairperson Gupta, Vice Chair Day and school board members. My name is Dawn Wise and I'm the Executive Director of the Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation. And I am so excited to be here to announce the 2023-2024 Lynchburg City Schools Excellence in Science $20,000 Scholarship Recipient. To share a little history about the Excellence in Science Scholarship. In the fall of 2013, Dr. Charles Pryor and his family announced their initial funding of a scholarship to be awarded every school year to an outstanding senior interested in entering a science-related field of study. And 10 years later, with the financial support of other sponsors along the way, this scholarship continues today. Even though Charlie could not be here tonight, I want to say a little bit about him because this year's recipient reminds me so much of him. Charlie is a graduate of Lynchburg City Schools and Virginia Tech, where he would go on to receive his doctorate in structural engineering. Charlie knew as a teenager that engineering would be his career choice. He enjoyed building structures, often going into the woods with some of his friends, cutting down trees and fashioning small cabins. Choosing Virginia Tech was also easy for the young man. First, his uncle had attended Blacksburg University due to the flip of a coin. His grandparents could only afford to send one of their sons to college and his uncle won the toss. Second, Charlie wanted to be a cadet. And he admired in his words, "A great guy down my street from my home who wore the cadet uniform." After finishing, finishing his education, he served as President and CEO of Westinghouse Energy Systems, President and CEO of British Nuclear Fuels Utilities Business Group, President and CEO of BMW Nuclear Technologies, and Chairman of the BMW Nuclear Fuel Company. Charlie has lived all over the world, but as much as he loves Virginia Tech, he loves his native home of Lynchburg even more and resides here today. Additionally, Charlie has a long history of valuing and supporting public education and while in Lynchburg, has served as member of the Lynchburg City School Board and past Chairman of the Partners in Education Program. He has always had a vision that the winner of this scholarship would go on to do great things in science or engineering, but ultimately would bring those talents back to Lynchburg, helping to continue to make our town a leader in science and engineering-related industries. And that is truly what Lynchburg has become. And much of that is thanks to our other longstanding sponsor of this scholarship, BWX Technologies, who has been a lead sponsor for this scholarship for the past six years and who shares and embraces Charlie's vision for our city, our students, and our workforce. Thank you, Nat Marshall, BWX's Community Relations Manager, and many other things, who is here tonight for all that you and BWXT do for our community. I've had the privilege of working with Nat for over 10 years in other capacities and I have been able to witness firsthand the incredible commitment to our city's students and youth that BWXT continues to demonstrate every day through their core values of people, innovation, responsibility, and the fitting fourth pillar of excellence. Thank you again, Nat and BWXT. Now, on to our recipient. First, a little bit about the requirements for this scholarship. It is awarded to the top senior science student as determined by a comprehensive application process to someone who has outstanding grades in science and engineering-related courses, who demonstrates a deep passion for science or engineering, who has created and mastered available science and engineering opportunities, and who has a strong science or engineering vision for their future. This process is extensive and it includes a written application, a letter of interest, three letters of recommendation, official transcript, three short essays to help gain greater applicant insight. And from this scoring process, the top five finalists are, complete an interview with Excellence in Science Scholarship Selection Committee, where all candidates were asked an established set of questions. Before I announce this year's winner, I want to state that the applicant pool was exceptional. And actually, in fact, we thought for sure like somebody will just rise to the top automatically. We debated for hours. So this year was just an incredible group of kids. And Lynchburg City Schools should be proud of the incredible students that public education has produced in this graduating class. So who best meets the profile of an Excellence in Science Scholarship recipient? This year's recipient is an outstanding graduating senior who's ranked first in his class, attends Central Virginia Governor's School, is an accomplished athlete, including team captain of the varsity soccer team, as well as a varsity starter on the wrestling team, and exhibits tremendous leadership through his appointment on the Executive Council of the school's Student Leadership Organization. Ah, see, this is where I get emotional. But it is his love of mechanical engineering that sets him apart and that spoke to the panel during the interview process. One of the questions that is asked during the interview is, "What is your most memorable experiment or research project you have done?" When he was asked to go into detail about this project titled, "The Effect of Degradation on the Tribological Performance of a Synthetic Versus Conventional Motor Lubricant", where with these findings, he drafted a poster presentation that advanced to the International Science and Engineering Fair in Dallas, Texas. He wistfully spoke as if one who had become smitten and fallen in love for the first time. He talked about his talent and love for repairing things with his hands and how he'd been working in a small, family-owned auto repair shop where he got the idea for the project from this old guy who's like 85, who would always get worked up about people who would choose conventional oil over synthetic because it was the new thing. The old guy kept saying that they didn't know what they were talking about because synthetic was better. So our recipient, recipient decided to find out for himself. And as he told the story, you could see the true passion for engineering, science, and all that it entails shine through. As a member of the interview panel, I often spoke to the candidates about how you can't fake this love, this passion, and it was evident within him. And it was the love of so many other things that won us over. I'm trying not to cry. Like for his mother. Somebody else needs to read this. Who he loves tremendously. And when asked about his academic goals, his response was simple. He hopes to be able to take care of her just as she is taking care of him. Shouldn't I have to do this? Okay. And his love of Lynchburg and where he lives, particularly the outdoors. He's already hiked 100 miles of the Appalachian Trail and hopes to do more. When speaking about this love, you could see him relax a bit, talking about how much he valued it, being able to take in nature and the beauty that surround us. And I sensed that he was, that was the sort of graduate that would probably be returning home just as Charlie Pryor envisioned. And one final note, this is my favorite part. This year's, this year's recipient is also the first recipient from Heritage High School and in the scholarship's 10-year history. And because of that, we have a special graduate from Heritage who has a few words for our winner and we'll queue it up right there.
Hello, Macalia Cole Mason. My name's Leland Melvin and I'm so excited to know that you are an awardee for the LCS Excellence in Science Award this year. Man, I am so proud of you, another pioneer, heritage pioneer. And I can't wait to see the things you're going to be doing. All the research you've done with synthetic versus conventional oil and the lubricity and just a tinkerer, you know, you love more business, you go to Virginia Tech in mechanical engineering. And just, I know that your future is going to be bright. And you know, where we start in our race is not always where we're going to finish, man. We're going to finish high. So thank you for all you're doing, helping your mom and just, you're going to have a really bright future, man. But, but my heart is in that you are the first heritage pioneer to win this award. So congratulations. If there's anything I can do to help you along your journey, just get in touch with me. And again, I'm very, very proud. Godspeed on the journey, brother. Take care. Bye.
Thank you. This year's LCS Excellence in Science Scholarship recipient embodies the very essence of what the scholarship was designed to honor. It is indeed my privilege to announce the 2023-24 LCS Excellence in Science Scholarship Recipient, Macalia Cole Mason.
I feel honored. Let me stand closer, right? First of all, you're, you're so inquisitive, right? Just answer the question, which is better, which is, which is better?
Well, my research, you can't prove anything with research. Any researcher will tell you that. But from my findings, I found that synthetic more oil was superior in a few ways.
Well, thank you for that. So now we all have some fortune with that. But isn't this exactly what we want to see in our students, right? And you stand here and I know you're just like, oh, no one embarrass me, Dr. Edwards, as a model of what we are, are creating here and what we're investing in. Not only a scholar in science, and I'm going to go woo-hoo for that because you know, I'm a chemistry major, so really interested in the work that you do, representing us in Dallas. Another accomplishment for that, athletics, auto mechanics. Did I hear that somewhere in your?
Yeah, I have a summer job.
A summer job, lawnmower business entrepreneur. Did I hear that too?
Yeah, I have one of those.
Okay, all right. So, so it doesn't get any better. Like, yeah, I have one of those. It doesn't get any better than this. But I think one of the things that I heard that made, made me the most proud, in addition to all of those accomplishments, is probably this one back here, which is the mom part of it, which really, as a mom, and we often celebrate our students, but we don't often celebrate our parents, who are the folks behind the kids. So I am so happy to hear you say that, that you want to take care of your mom. That is so awesome. But I think we all need to give the moms, the dads, the caregivers a big round of applause. So we are grateful that you are our winner and woo, Heritage, okay, all right. Here, but if he was. He'd have that big beady smile, right? Yes, yes, so we're going to represent for that. But I will turn it over to you to say a few words and again, congratulations.
So as you've probably heard, I am Macalia Mason. I go to Heritage High School and I'm the recipient of the 2024 Excellence in Science Scholarship. And while I'm up here, I really just, I want to thank a few people. I am extremely grateful to the Excellence in Science Board and the Education Foundation for providing, and its sponsors for providing me with this opportunity and to, all the people that give up their time and their energy to create such a wonderful organization that provides opportunities to people like myself. And just, it's really going to allow me to take my ambitions to the next level. And something I'm so passionate about, which is research. I fell in love with that at the governor's school. And now I'm going to be able to, you know, fulfill my ambition of being able to take that to the next level in college. I'll be attending Virginia Tech in the fall. And I'm very excited about that. And I'm just really excited to see what I can do with the opportunity that I've been given through this scholarship and to be able to make connections. And I didn't even expect to hear from Leland Melvin, but that just, that made my day. And I'm just, I'm so happy, that makes me so happy. But yeah, I just, and I just want to say a special thanks to Ms. Wise here. She taught me something on the day I walked into my interview, or I guess when I didn't walk in for my interview, because I marked the wrong date on my calendar and I wasn't there. So, but I walked in, I was able to reschedule it for later in the day. And I walked in and she met me with a smile and told me that everything was okay because I had been stressing about being late and not being there on time. And just being like the grace and the kindness that she showed me, that's a lesson that I learned there and I'll be, I'll take that for the rest of my life. And I'll apply that to every situation I'm in because, and just never underestimate the value that a little bit of kindness and grace, that can really go a long way. Thank you for that. Yeah, that's all I got to say.
We're going to take a photo, so we're going to ask you to come to the middle. We want parents, come on up here. Come on up here, mom, this is part yours. Yes, yes. Yes, yes. And can I get my, my Heritage staff over there to represent? Come on back here with us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before you go, I just also want to, before Dawn goes, it's in my comments later, but I do want to thank you for the solar eclipse glasses for all ten thousand folks at the foundation. Thank you so much for that. That was, yes.
Hold on a few minutes. Because next item is Chair's comment, and I was going to embarrass you. Because you have what, what Mr. Mason said is perfect, because I've seen you for LCS Superintendent's Breakfast. You go out of your way, you work day and night on every project you have, and for what you did, and Dr. Edwards says, for solar glasses, I used two of them. Every school had it. I tested at Heritage Elementary, every kid had it. So you did an excellent job. It's a job, but you know, the passion which goes along with that is remarkable. So we applaud you, and let's give her a standing ovation.
It's definitely my team, Tracy Baker, Bianca Childress, and my board. They are, I stand on their shoulders, so thank you so much.
And I'll give yield to Mr. Marshall. Do you have anything to say, Nat? You've been quiet, which is unusual.
I say a lot, so.
I know, that's unusual.
It's something that BWXT is proud to be doing, you know? Certainly, we have a great need. We have a lot of needs for everything from engineers to machinists to inspectors to welders, you know? And to expect to be able to fulfill our needs in a narrow funnel is not worthwhile. And so we've got to widen that funnel so that some kids, we're going to find, you know, may like the idea of making, you know, thirty, thirty-five, forty dollars an hour, but just really aren't cut out. So certainly, we've got to make every opportunity available for folks to, whether they become engineers, or like I said, machinists or inspectors, or would like to, to have that opportunity, and then realizing that, you know, probably only twenty or thirty percent will actually come through it. But that's, you got to look at it in that sense. So we're doing everything, and we really appreciate the opportunity to be able to do things like this. Over the course of the last month, we have literally been worn out because we've gone to the elementary schools, middle schools, been at career fairs and everything else. But that's part of our responsibility as a community partner. So we appreciate it, the opportunity, and enjoy it, and hopefully we'll be experiencing the fruits of our labors in five or ten or fifteen years, when some of us probably won't be around. So thank you.
We appreciate everything you and BWXT does for this community.
Absolute thanks.
Thank you. Next item is student representative comments. Dr. Edwards.
Okay, all right. So we have, you all know that we have some guest student reps here, that we invite students from schools across the division to join our excellent high school reps to tell us a little bit about what's going on in their school. And tonight, we have two schools, so we're going to start with Perrymont Elementary School with our principal, Ms. Foster, who is back there. And we have two special reps, London Powell Scott and Timothy Scott. So I would like to invite them up to speak.
Come on over.
And there's a, well, Timothy's a little tall. There's a step stool if you need it. And Ms. Foster, you can come up with them too.
Can I start now?
Yes.
Perrymont, fifth grade by Tim Smith and London Powell Scott. Our favorite things about Perrymont, going outside, recess, and being with all my friends. Our favorite things about Perrymont, our amazing staff who have wonderful ways of teaching their students. Bike awards, one community won for escaped bikes to students for showing improvement. Read-a-thon, Read-a-thon was where everyone in Perrymont was reading and trying to get to fifty thousand minutes read. In just two weeks, we were able to beat our school's goal and read fifty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-three minutes. Podcasting, first we picked a Virginia Studies or Science topic, next we researched and wrote a script for our podcast, finally, we recorded our podcast. It was fun. We got to experiment with different sounds. Fifth grader's all in to win. Every afternoon, we would do all in groups. We worked with teachers or we were in, we were on a sack path. When we earned trophies, we got to decorate a wall. Jobs, every fifth grader got a job to help around the school. Here are some of the jobs we got this year. Tittering kindergarteners, passing out food bags, raising the flag, watering plants, recycling, reporting on weather, helping our car riders, and office helper. Every Thursday, I got to raise the flag with Mr. Baldwin. Growth superstars, we tracked our scores every test so we would know our grades. We set goals, and if we met our goals, we would put stars on the wall. We even beat our goals. Other special events, Spirit Week, George Flicking Good Visit, Book here today, Twelve Days of December, Fun Fridays, and presentation from engineers at BWXT. Thank you all for coming. Perrymont is a fun school. We had a lot of things to do. It is a great school to visit. We look forward to seeing you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tim. He did such a great job, and he's all dressed up, ready to be interviewed and hired. I think I told you that when you got your bike, that I was ready to hire you then, so. Thank you.
He's got competition.
Yes, yes.
He's got it.
And again, let us one more time just celebrate the parents because we know that that dedication to your children. And the wonderful staff who never amazed me, never ceased to amaze me at Perrymont with all the wonderful things that they do there and the opportunities that they provide for students. So thank you, Ms. Foster and team, for that.
Yeah, I want to piggyback on what Dr. Edwards says. Ms. Foster, you're amazing. I saw you, that's the science fair you had, you were there, Dr. Ward came was there. It was amazing. And I took an outside guest to visit, and they were beyond belief, wow, what you had that evening. So thank you very much for what you do for Lynchburg City Schools.
Okay, our next group of student reps are from Fort Hill Community School, and we have Isaiah Andres and Amari OJ Trent. Did I say your last name correct? And, oh, Andrews. I got to fix that then.
Good evening.
Oh, and Dr. Glover, principal. Sorry.
My name's Chris Glover. I've met most of you before or talked to the board before. I just wanted to let you know, this is Isaiah. We, we went to pick, I picked Isaiah up, and then I went to pick OJ up, and we were swerving all over White Rock with my GPS going everywhere, and we could not find the house. So OJ practiced this speech, and he's not going to get to present it. I'm going to fill in his spot for him. But if any of you want to come to visit Fort Hill and meet OJ, he actually loves meeting new contacts and collaborating with people, so I welcome you. All right? All right, so when I say, I'm reading this, OJ, remember, all right? Good evening, my name is Amari Trent.
And Isaiah Andrews.
We are both students at Fort Hill Community School. As you are aware, Fort Hill is one of the alternative schools for LCS, but many people don't seem to know what exactly happens inside of alternative schools or how our experiences are both the same and different from our base schools.
We also both came from Heritage High School. As our other base school, just like Heritage, at Fort Hill, we rotate through several periods a day and work on our core classes, some virtual electives added in. Outside of our regular school classes, we have been engaged in several opportunities that most outside schools of our outs, of our school know little about. I, for instance, have been part of the mentorship group led by Fort Hill teacher, Mr. Hurt. Mr. Hurt pairs male students interested in having mentors with one of our Alpha Philly Alpha brothers. As part of this, we sometimes go on community events, like when I attended the Monti Graf Celebration with hundreds of other people at the Academy Center of Arts. There are also mentors for female students with women of DST and AKA coming to school to spend time with them one-on-one or in groups. And for our middle school students, the University of Lynchburg provides mentors under the direction of Dr. Owen Cardwell. They spend each Wednesday mentoring students and each Friday leading students to strong base lessons.
And I have participated in other opportunities. I went with some other students and faculty to see a performance of Step Africa at the Academy Center for the Arts, and I'm currently enrolled in the Swim to Work Program in partnership with Iron Lives in the YMCA. I'm being trained to be a lifeguard so I can get a job at one of our local pools. We've also both signed up to be a part of workforce development through a partnership Fort Hill has with Legacy Education Center. Another opportunity that I've taken advantage of is being part of the leadership group at Fort Hill, led by Ms. Crystal Grant and Coach Rodney Smith. We met weekly for group sessions and finished the program with a group leadership retreat near the Peaks of Otter. Isaiah and I are both doing what we need to do, along with many other students at Fort Hill, to get back to our base schools and to graduate. We have goals for our future and are taking advantage of every opportunity given to us to better ourselves and be successful.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and enjoy the evening.
Yes, well, I'll call him OJ for right now and his other, his other self. So I think what we heard you say was mentors, Swim to Work Program with the Y in Iron Lives, programs with the University of Lynchburg as well. And Isaiah, you said something about your goals and doing, absolutely. So I think it's important for us to hear that, to hear all of the things. Notice I didn't say SOLs or any of that, right? Those are important. However, what Isaiah and Stepan OJ, all right, did, what they shared with us are equally important, and so is the involvement of our community. So very, very vital that we work with our community to help our children, but that's not always easy. You have to know that our children are open to having the community help them. And what you see here tonight is two students, standing student, sharing with us that not only are they open to have the community come in and work with them, they appreciate it, they, they want it, they're learning from it, they're developing, and they have goals that they see themselves going forward, as we see them going forward, meeting their potential. So I, and I'm glad you talked about what Fort Hill, what happens inside of Fort Hill, because I think many people don't know and have a misperception about our children there. And I'm so glad that you all were here to join us and share some of the wonderful things that are going on. And we need more. If you're out there listening to this in the community and you want to get involved and help LCS, we certainly would appreciate more of that because that's part of our excellence by design. So thank you.
Dr. Glover, we appreciate everything, you know? I acknowledge you for your hospitality before, but your passion for academics is unparalleled. Your reading, writing, you're pushing, you know what I'm talking about, you're pushing hard, so keep doing that, and this board is behind you. And through Dr. Edwards. Anything, anybody wants to say it? I know you want to say something, Mr. Cross is coming out and.
I will always say something if you need, if you push me. But no, I appreciate everything that you're doing, Dr. Glover. It's just fantastic work. You see that what you can bring out of these children to make them productive members of society, and I applaud you for your work. It's difficult work, it's hard work, but it is so important, and the return on the investment that you provide to our children in our city is really unmatched as far as education provided, and I appreciate that, and I think our school members appreciate that.
Ms. Lowry was saying something.
And I've been to Fort a couple times, and yes, and most recently in the math class, and you guys are doing, your staff, you guys have done a wonderful job with the kids. The kids are involved, they're enjoying it, and they're, they're learning, they're using creative ways to retain information, so great job.
Thank you. Dr. Edwards, back to you.
Sure, okay. And now we're going to turn it over to our two amazing high school reps who are here, dedicated with us every month, and I'm going to turn it over to Heritage first. So Saleh, you're up first.
Thank you. So this has been our, I guess, beginning of April, but also March. So we started our spring athletics. They are now in full swing. We do not have a softball team this year, unfortunately, but we do have baseball, boys and girls soccer, boys and girl tennis, boys and girl outdoor track and field. And some of the highlights recently, our boys' soccer team played LCA, and they blew it out of the water. We are so proud of them. They've been coming up for the past few years, so I'm really excited to see what they do this year. Going into some student achievement, which we got to kick it off amazingly with the first Heritage Excellence in Science Scholar, so shout out to Macajia. He's on the boys' soccer team, so he had that win with LCA last week. But moving into some of our club's forensics, so we had Indra Velasco, who's a senior. She plays fourth in impromptu speaking at the VHSL State Competition, so we're very proud of her, and Ms. Clomstra, who runs the Forensics Club States. So we had two students, Essence Rosser, who her birthday was yesterday, so happy birthday to her, and then Serena Hernandez, they competed at the DECA State Leadership Conference in the Travel and Tourism Team Decision Making, and they placed seventh. So so proud of them because that was a national level competition. So yeah. All-American, Marquise White finished sixth all around in the 2024 New Balance Indoor Nationals, and that, his stats put him as an all-American athlete, so we are extremely proud of his work. He's also a senior, doing very well at Heritage. Lastly, as far as student recognition goes, our All-Star Cast. So five students were awarded the All-Star Cast at SETC with the Heritage Pioneer Theater. All of these students are seniors except for Atlas Salazar, who's a junior. So we have Kat Orr, Nisha Mangrati, Atlas Salazar, who I mentioned before, DJ Yul, and Felipe Arujio. Moving on to some community involvement, the Little Library. So our Heritage Carpentry Students built and installed a free little library right outside, so as you're leaving today, take a peek. Yeah, it's super cute. They worked so hard on it. Our Career Fair, so our senior English teachers and guidance department worked hard with our seniors to prepare resumes, prepare them for conversations, networking, what fields they're interested in to get them ready for this career fair, which was held on March twenty-seventh at EC Glass, and students got bused to and from EC Glass and Heritage in cohorts and made some great connections. I got to attend. It was really fun, really good, met some really nice people. Finally, Diversity and Inclusion, which is a new and up-and-coming club at Heritage, but they got to go to Diversity Dialogue Day at University of Lynchburg. So I'm excited to see where this club goes. Seems really interesting. Thank you, guys.
And again, very proud of everything that is going on at Heritage. So keep up the good work there, for sure. All right, Ms. Lucy, EC Glass.
Hello. So this is also our March and beginning of April. So we've now made the full transition into our spring sports season, which we've got, I think, twelve, thirteen or twelve teams. I may have accidentally left off track, but that's because you can't find anything about it online, so we should probably get that started. But it kind of brings in a lot of good new opportunities for students to either participate or go and watch the sports. So softball is doing really well so far, they're three and three. Baseball is six and oh. JV baseball is one and two and one. Boys tennis, they have. Boys tennis, they have their match um, right now actually, and then girls tennis, yesterday won their match. Um, most girls won all of the either doubles or singles matches they played in, so we're very proud of them. Boys soccer is four and one, JV boys soccer is three and one and one. Girls soccer is two and one, JV girls soccer is oh and one. Boys lacrosse is three and oh, JV boys lacrosse is two and oh, or oh and two, and then girls lacrosse is two and one. We have a lot of spring sports, so sorry about that. Um, and then on Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, National Honor Society um, held the ceremony for the juniors and seniors who'd recently been accepted into the program based on high academic achievements and their involvement in the community through volunteering. Um, the, it was a really lovely event, they put it on really well. Speeches were made by current leadership as well as Dr. Rule, so congratulations to all the new members. Um, not only did EC Glass, not only did the EC Glass Forensics Team celebrate their one hundredth anniversary, they also received state runner-up at the annual forensic state competition. So congratulations to Bria Seifert, who received first place in dramatic interpretation, Sophia Haupt, who received first place in poetry, Leighton Nelson, who was the state runner-up in prose, Amory Dop, the state runner-up in oratory, and Chester Lob, who received third place in storytelling. Um, not only is forensic something you have to be really smart and quick on your feet to do, but you also have to a lot of, have a lot of confidence in public speaking skills, so that's really impressive, so congratulations on bringing home a victory. Um, we've got a lot of awards that we've won recently, so from March twenty-first to March twenty-fourth, the EC Glass and Heritage Orchestra traveled together to Nashville, Tennessee to participate in the 2024 World Stride Heritage Festival. Not only did they win first place in orchestra, but they also received scores that would qualify them for the Invitation Only Festival of Gold Competition. While they were in Nashville, students took a tour of Belmont University, got to hear the National Symphony Orchestra, and visited the Country Music Hall of Fame. So congratulations to Glass and Heritage for bringing home a victory for Lynchburg. Another award received, um, that we had for EC Glass is one of our favorite teachers, Erin Retkey, being named the winner of the Science Teaching Award at Randolph College. Every year Randolph College gives out um, a, uh, an award for um, science teaching excellence because of their SciFest event that they put on. And um, she is just absolutely a ray of sunlight in the halls of EC Glass. Um, unfortunately, I don't have her now, but she taught me when I was a student at Dunbar. And um, I can say she's very deserving of this award because of how hard she works to make her classes exciting, and so we can learn as much as we can. Um, next, the EC Glass Choir, um, another congratulations. Uh, they received excellent ratings at the District Six Coral Assessment at Radford University on Sunday. So not only did they receive excellent ratings, but they received a superior rating at site reading, which I know from experience is not easy, so keep up the good work, hilltoppers. Um, so another thing that's been really important to me recently is on April fourth, it was National School Librarian Day. So I thought I would take the time to recognize some of the people at our school that do so much and sometimes go unrecognized for it. Um, the EC Glass Library Staff does so much more than just check out books and recommending something you might want to read. They put, they do so much, um, they put up book displays at the entrance of the library multiple times a year. Uh, it often has to do with whatever month it could be, season, holiday, or local or national events. Um, every month they do some kind of reading promotion, such as First Chapter Fridays, which is you read the first chapter of the book and see if it's something you'd be interested in continuing reading. Um, they had Book Bingo for two months, I think in October and November. And they're just kind of doing all they can to keep books in the hands of EC Glass students, which is something that's really important. Um, however, not everything that the library does has to, has to do with books. Um, this past year, they started doing a little something called Maker Mondays. And Maker Mondays started because they want more students in the library, they want to put more people in there to give them more opportunities. Um, it's grown into something that they're really proud of, and as they should be proud of it. Uh, their themes for Maker Mondays offer curriculum tie-in, tie-ins, interactive hands-on activities. Like in October, students were given the opportunity to build a catapult that would launch a piece of candy corn. And it seems just like a fun seasonal activity, but it also builds that knowledge of how to make a basic machine, which I think is really cool, because that's something that you probably wouldn't see in a lot of school libraries. In addition to Maker Mondays, they also have interactive bulletin boards that kind of invite friendly competitions. Uh, librarians will even go as far as teaching the occasional lesson that they might need more resources or more space for, that the library could provide. Um, and also the school library, especially Ms. McCormick, she works hard every day to release the school newsletters that it's, they keep me, I get a lot of my information from here, from the school newsletter, so thank you so much, Ms. McCormick, you're so helpful. Um, so thank you so much for the library, to the library staff for doing all that you do. Um, and they go unrecognized for it a lot, so I just wanted to recognize them and say thank you, we really appreciate it. And that's all I've got for you, so thank you so much.
Very cool stuff, I love Maker Monday, that's just, yeah. And again, I like that you said that the library is so much more than just reading and that there's integration um, of activities and things for you all to do, and again. Um, if anybody hasn't noticed yet, there's just so much to be proud of here in Lynchburg City Schools. Um, sometimes we get bogged down by all the not-so-great news that we hear, other school divisions have not-so-great news too. Um, but we don't spend enough time on this stuff here, all of the good news. And since this meeting started, and we're about an hour in, it's been nothing but accolades and the wonderful things that our students and staff and families and community members have done. So let us not forget that, I love these moments when you all are here sharing with us, because it's easy to just forget the small things that aren't so small. They're really big accomplishments that our students have done, so, so thank you ladies too.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, uh, next one is public comment, Dr. Day.
Okay, I will, as usual, read um, the portion of the policy that I need to remind all public commenters about. Uh, persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or employee that are not related to the public official or employee's official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Please do not clap, boo, or express approval or disapproval of speakers. Speakers should be treated with respect, even if you disagree with their positions. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representative of a group should identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The time allotted for public comments at school board meetings is thirty minutes. Uh, voicemail messages will be played, uh, to be played are also limited to three minutes for individuals, five minutes for speakers representing a group. Priority will be given to in-person comments before voicemail messages in the following order. First, students, second, staff, third, parents and guardians, and fourth, community members. Uh, I think that's um, I think that's all I need to read. It is now five fifty-one, so the thirty-minute timer starts now. Um, we do have one staff that has signed up, uh, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Board, you'll forgive me if I'm figuring out this microphone up here. My name is Mr. Phillips, and I am an extremely proud teacher at Sandusky Elementary School. You may recognize me from my obnoxious blue and yellow sign, my dashing good looks, or my occasional outbursts during school board meetings. With so many community voices having already expressed opinions, facts, and heartache at this podium, I struggle to give this council something new, something they haven't heard. In any profession, a constant stream of discontent can become white noise, fall into the background, and a feeling of, well, whatever I do is not gonna make them happy, so why bother, begins to infect and spread. Educators feel this with ever-changing expectations on lesson plans and curriculum implementation. Parents feel it, when the love they give their child is met with opposition and rolled eyes. Police officers and mental health workers feel it when they are told that you could have done more. The common thread in all these examples is that we are all trying to do the best we can, which leads me back to my dilemma. What can I give you that you haven't heard before, something that can break through the white noise? What I settled on is something very simple, and I hope comes across as genuine. I'm sorry, I am sincerely, sincerely sorry. You are all members of this community, people with children and friends and family and heart in this community, and I'm sorry you're having to make these decisions. Your job stinks. But, the great teachers find a way to do what's best for their students by listening and working with all stakeholders involved. Great parents are able to put their shoulder into the wind and be as accepting and supportive as they are questioning and firm. Great police and mental health workers communicate, evaluate, and solve problems, not exacerbate them. And in your case, a great school board should do a little bit of all these things, which is why your job kind of stinks. It's hard, it's really, really hard, but it's still your job. Same as any of the professions I've laid out, you chose to do it, and if it's too hard, that's fine. People leave their jobs they don't like or aren't good at all the time. I'd imagine the majority of you have day jobs, or at least a side hustle to fall back on. But so long as this is the job, you need to hold yourself to the high standard that all members of our community strive for. It's what makes our city such an amazing place. I could not do your job, so I don't. I don't balance thirty-five million dollar budgets, because that's not the job I chose, I chose to teach. And I know that if I have a student who's struggling and needs help, if I care, if I really care, I don't shut them down, because that doesn't fit my plan, I fix the plan. And, if anybody wants to see what good teaching looks like, you're always welcome to stop by Sandusky Elementary, where we do it better! I work hard at the job I love, and I hope and believe you will all do the same. And again, I hope you take this with sincerity, thank you very much for allowing me to be up here today.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. That's our only staff, next in order is Parents and Guardians, uh, Jordan Nesbit.
And I am speaking on behalf of the Sandusky Elementary PTO. Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Edwards, and fellow staff. I am a parent of two current Sandusky Elementary students and one future LCS student. I'm here today representing the Sandusky Elementary PTO. I'll start first with a little background on myself. Around two years ago, my two daughters and I packed up and moved over eight hundred miles from Arkansas, right here to Lynchburg. We purposely moved into the Sandusky District, because through research and firsthand experience, I have never heard of a single spoken word about a school the way that it was about Sandusky. In Arkansas, my girls attended a wonderful school, it was extremely difficult to leave. When my now-fifth grader had started kindergarten there, they added two additional classrooms due to an increase in enrollment. That brought the total classrooms up to eight for kindergarten. My daughter didn't even know some of the other kindergarten teachers, much less any of the rest of the school. Their first week at Sandusky, I think almost every staff member knew who they were by name. I can show you the grades and the test scores and the therapy notes to prove what a difference this school makes in a child's life. That success is for a number of reasons, including small class sizes, but the biggest difference is truly because my kids are known by name and by need in that building. And not just by the staff there. It's by the PTO, it's by the fellow parents. And those needs that they're known by include academic, mental, emotional, and social needs. When I was in Arkansas, I was the type of parent that would attend all the events, but when it came to volunteering, going to the PTO meeting, school board, whatever, oh, here's some money, there you go, I have other stuff to do. It took less than a year here at, at Sandusky to realize I needed to be a part of that culture and that family that my children were wel- welcomed into with open arms. But something I quickly realized was that the things that kids in urban schools face are a whole lot different than what most people will ever realize. And I have noticed a massive gap from this board and the school admin in providing those updates on the decisions and the processes that have been made from this board. Even as far as the failure of developing a plan that can execute the ad- decisions that have been made. The communications that have gone out are not considering the equity and hardships that these families face. I am a parent of a Sandusky student, and I have yet to receive a direct communication about the closure. And it puts a lot of worry and unsettling into me that there are currently parents, guardians, et cetera, that do not have any idea what is going on because of the list of hardships that they may face, that they don't have access to the communications that have been sent out, because nothing direct has been given. My next point is that TCM desperately needs a decision to be made. And in reality, there's two plans that can be put, put into place ASAP. Number one, if we receive the additional funding we need to remain open another year, they need to know what's gonna be done to make it sustainable. They're currently losing teachers and staff, and eventually parents and families, because this lack of communication and the uncertainty around this situation makes it incredibly hard to want to continue there for another year. Go ahead and make a decision on whether you want to do a hybrid, give them a valid goal in the future for them to hold on to. Because again, these unknowns are going to just continue to increase the likelihood that these parents decide to take control on the things that they can and make decisions and look elsewhere when they don't feel they can trust this board. Number two, plan that needs to be made, if the money's not received, where do those kids go? We need a functional plan that allows these kids to know where they're going and that they can, if possible, go as much together, because then they can band together to get through this. But really to circle this back up and celebrate the good, as Dr. Edward said, the culture and success of Sandusky, it's almost the complete opposite picture of TCM. The staff and teachers are committing to stay yet another year, knowing that it could end because of the longtime leader that they have there. And so we need to be, we're gonna continue advocating and working towards finding those creative solutions you need. We just need you guys to let us help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carla Jones.
I am, um, speaking on behalf of TCM PTO. Um, this is the first time I've come without something written up, I have a, a few bullet points. Um, I didn't think I was gonna be able to come tonight, because I'm tired of prioritizing this over being present with them. I'm tired of spending every ounce of my extra time that I have, which when you're a mother of three and between you and your husband, you're, you're putting out and working on four different businesses, it's not a lot of time. But those guys back there are my priority, and I will do what it takes. So some thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Phillips, that was phenomenal. I absolutely just say amen to what you said. Um, the problem is now, there is no longer just a lack of a plan, there is a lack of leadership. I just spent this past weekend at a leadership conference and thought I would share some of the, some of my takeaways um, and how it relates to this situation. Um, one of them is, leadership is a retention strategy. Um, that's how, when you show good leadership, you keep teachers and staff in the system, you keep kids in the system, you keep families engaged in the system. But it starts with good leadership. Nothing changes if nothing changes. Nothing's changing, so guess what? Nothing's changed, seven months down the line, and what do you have to show for it? Nothing, there is still no plan. To what Jordan said, there has been zero official communication. You may not know yet what's going to happen, but don't parents deserve to know what is in the works? Not every parent has the ability to do what I do, to get up here weekend and week out. They need to know, they need to be able to make decisions. Leaders are made in the valley. It's really easy to lead from the mountain. It's really easy to lead from the mountain top when things are going well. It's really hard to lead in the valley. Now, we are in the valley, and we need good leaders. I find that City Council keeps being made the enemy in all of this. Does City Council need to fund public education? 1,000% yes. Will I fight for that? 1,000% yes. Will you find parents that will stand behind you and advocate for that? Yes. Then you have a solid plan in place. What are we going to fight for? Give them money. For what? I don't know, but give them money. I've used this example with a few Board members. Let's say each of you has $100,000 sitting in your back pocket. And I come to you, and I say, "I really want you to invest that $100,000 with me." Okay, well, what do you want to do? If I sit there and I lay out a business plan with a one-year plan, a five-year plan, mission statement, vision statement, financial plan of what that's going to look like and where your money is going to go, and how it's going to work, and where I see it going, if you believe in what I'm doing, you're probably a lot likely to invest. But if I come to you and say, "Gosh, I'd really love that $100,000 in your back pocket." Okay, well, what do you want to do with it? I'm not really sure, but I've decided that I'm going to open a business and I'm going to figure it out as a go. Are you gonna, are you gonna give me your $100,000? When you have no clue how I'm going to spend it, what I'm going to do with it, what my vision is, what my plan is with it? I would imagine that's pretty much how City Council feels right now. So we need to give them a plan, something that we as parents can stand behind and get behind and stop blaming them for not funding us. I wouldn't want to fund us either. I would be worried about where that money is going. This is what I'm asking, what we're asking. TCM is falling apart from the inside out. Create a task force with parents, with teachers, with school board members, with admin. Let us all work together to create a plan, because what you're doing right now is not working. Take action. It's been seven months. We have to take action. We have seven weeks of school left. We need a plan before the end.
Thank you. Next is Philip Stumpf.
Hi. I'm Philip Stumpf. You may be tired of hearing from me by now, but again, I want to thank you for taking the time and energy for doing this important work of service on the school board. As a product of public education myself, as a parent of three children who thrived in LCS schools, and as a teacher, I salute you. Last time I spoke to you about all the wonderful restorative justice programs begun under the leadership of our amazing Superintendent, Dr. Edwards, a national leader in public education. She has brought so many positive changes in our schools, but she has had to do it with one hand tied behind her back because of shrinking school budgets. In a penny wise, pound foolish program of tax cuts, the City Council has starved our schools. Did you know that Harrisonburg spent 35% of its city budget last year on public schools? That Roanoke spent 32% of their budget on public schools? And that Lynchburg only spent 17.3%? Just a little over half of our neighboring communities. This year, the city manager is proposing a budget that would only keep the funding at last year's level. With the current large inflation rate, this funding would be much less in real dollars than last year and would necessitate the elimination of many positions and programs, and apparently is threatening to of our schools. I trust that most of you on this Board are truly committed to public education. You would not be on the school board if you did not realize that our children are our future. Public education has made this country and this city thrive. It has produced outstanding leaders like the astronaut, Leland Melvin, that you heard from today. It makes all people thrive and not just the privileged few. Think of how many opportunities have been opened for women through our public schools. My wife sees this all the time in her work with the Girl Scouts. Public education equips our children to live in the diverse society that our country has become. It teaches them to relate to people who are different from them and to capitalize on this diversity. You heard about this from Heritage High School today. It's a national model for this diversity, as their students have demonstrated in their wonderful organization overcoming adversity through diversity. And the video that they produced that many of you have seen. Dr. Gupta, I'm sorry, I need another minute to finish this. Will you please do that?
Go ahead and finish. Go ahead and finish.
Dr. Gupta, will you please ensure that the Board views this video again, especially the new members? When my children attended EC Glass, it was one of the best 50 high schools in the country. This is no longer the case because we have starved our public education. I can make these arguments before City Council, and I will tonight, but you can make them much more effectively as a school board in your joint meeting with the City Council, April 16th. I challenge you to argue vociferously and courageously before the City Council for greatly increased funding for Lynchburg City Schools. Please, demand more. Harry Truman had a statement on his desk that said, "The buck stops here." Do not be like the people who say, "Mistakes were made, but not by me." Take the responsibility that you have as school board members and speak out. Save and strengthen public education in Lynchburg. Do it for our children, for our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Nettie Webb?
And I'm speaking for Saber Schools.
I'm sorry, repeat that, please?
I'm speaking for Saber Schools.
Okay.
Before I begin, I want to address Dr. Day's mention of the NAACP Legal Defense Fund Community Meeting. And I hope you're not surprised that this is happening, because time and time again, we have brought up that rezoning and getting the desegregation order resended is more complicated than you have all made it out to be, and that we are talking and working with experts. However, once again, you have not listened. It has been seven months since your vote for the revised Scenario Three, closing TC Miller and Sandusky. As Mayor Reed stated, for far too long, our teachers, students, and community members have been treated as chess pieces in the middle of what feels like a game, left in the dark, grappling with uncertainty and unanswered questions. Week after week, meeting after meeting, we have asked for accountability, transparency, and a well-defined plan. Let me be clear, these are not just buzzwords, they are foundational to the community's trust in your decisions, yet once again, these principles weren't considered. Last week, during the joint session, you boldly stated in your presentation, you want to work together with City Council and the community. Well, and I know you're not talking about the PPE tonight, how is hiding and investigating a PPEA from City Council, the city manager, or the community working together or being transparent? And, before Dr. Day or any school member repeats the state code that protects conversations on PPEAs, that is true, but it does not mean the district can't say they are investigating that option, especially amongst the turmoil of your decision in September. It means that you do not present proprietary information or detailed plans. You, once again, made a choice to not be transparent. You aren't trying to work together, and your lack of intention and communication speaks volumes. You have all treated this situation as if it is a sim simulation and not reality. You've easily made decisions with no real research, analysis, or critical thinking, and manipulated the situation so that parents are put in the middle of your power struggle with City Council. Yes, they have reduced funding. Yes, inflation has made their allocation go less far. But this Board and administration have failed to actually submit a concrete plan to City Council that actually gave them trust in how you manage funds. You failed at presenting research to City Council on why urban districts have higher costs, or why you might not see the same achievement on standardized tests. You've only responded reactively instead of proactively, blindly dictating the future of education in the city. You have not done all you can to be fiscally responsible or advocate for increased public education funds, instead you've once again passed the buck to the community. Dr. Gupta stated many times, "The school board does not make the plan the administration does." Well, relieving yourselves of the responsibility from the chaos the district is in is irresponsible and lacks leadership. If you're an actual leader during a crisis, you don't say, "That's not my job, sorry that happened." No, you roll up your sleeves and you actually help and make it happen. Now, I do not think, now I do think it's quite interesting how you decided to not discuss the PPEA today, because not all members were here. Let's go back to the decision in September to move forward Scenario Three. Well, Dr. Day was not here. Do you remember when Member Jaleel made a motion to rescind the decision to close TC Miller and Sandusky and slowed down the process, and Member Trust was not here? That vote did not pass because it was a 4-4 split. Why wasn't this consideration made for those votes? Again, you spent more time debating what basic rights for students, like respecting their chosen names and pronouns, are than actually investing in Lynchburg education and making it an equitable and safe place. And now you give considerations for discussions you actually want to have than a decision that will impact the future of public education in Lynchburg. The time for action is now. Let's work together to build a brighter future for Lynchburg City Schools. And this Board needs to use critical thinking when making decisions, when deciding on a plan, when evaluating the administrator's presentation. You need to ask questions, analyze the responses, and do your own research, and don't just blindly take them at their word. As you discuss the PPEA in the future presentation, here are some questions you can ask. One, what is going to happen to the students if the expansion isn't complete until at least spring 2026? Where will the students go? Will we have to rezone again? Will we have to use modular units? How much will those cost? Two, the community has been critical of our engagement with them. How will we improve it for this project? Three, do you have a second, more realistic timeline that takes into account potential supply chain delays or delays due to local and national political elections? Four, where are the funds for contractors coming from? Construction is supposed to start this fall, and there is no guarantee City Council will allocate the funds, especially with the lack of transparency, communication, and overall planning. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment period. I believe there's no recorded messages, is that correct?
That is correct.
Emails. Any emails?
No emails, no, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Next one is finance report, Dr. Edwards.
Okay, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Jamies for the February 2024 finance report.
Good evening, Chairman Gupta, members of the Board, and Dr. Edwards. You know, we've had some amazing student presentations today, and I try to think about how to make the financial report as amazing as the student presentations, but alas, I think showing a bunch of numbers up on the screen would fall short of the same impact. So I just have a few items to note. So February marks 66.67% of the fiscal year passing. It's running like lightning speed. The percent of revenues collected versus the original appropriation was at 58%. Revenue collections are lagging slightly from prior month. They're down to 5.8% compared to 9% the previous month. The amount of expenditures versus original appropriation was at 61.43% year-to-date, which is 5.24% less than the percent of last fiscal year passing. So the total expenditures inclusive of encumbrances equates to 98.36%. I wish I had some nice little pictures to show you on those things. So there are some notable variances. Some are carryovers from prior month. The attendance and health personnel are at 160%. So this elevated percent is still attributed to moving funding for attendance clerks to function 100, and the need to do a journal entry to move the expenses associated with these positions, sorry, function 1,000 to 2,000. So that will be done, but it'll be done later in the fiscal year, so as not to have to keep doing it on a monthly basis. Pupil transportation other has expanded 547.87%. This elevated percent is still due to the unbudgeted expense associated with private transport companies, transport companies that are required to transport students that can't be transported by any other means, and it's a very necessary expense. Vehicle maintenance service is at 169%. The elevated percent is attributed to encumbrances that are associated with vehicle and powered equipment supplies, and of course, the labor costs associated with those. Operations and maintenance personnel, 124.16%. There's an unprocessed general entry to move identified building services, FTEs, to function 4,200, which is only spent to 89.19%. That'll be processed later in the fiscal year as well, not to have to keep doing those journal entries throughout every month. Equipment services other, 163.82%. These are capital expenses associated with an approved marquee sign for Dunbar Middle School. That transition, that expense happened at the end of the last fiscal year, and those expenses, the invoices, weren't until this fiscal year, so we will carry that extra expense through the end of this fiscal year. It also is associated with invoices that were coded for EC Glass auditorium equipment, some upgrades done there as well. Security services personnel at 145.10%. Expenses associated with a local match portion of a grant to provide funding for SSOs at our schools. Security services other are at 151.66%. They are expenses associated with purchase service of security for off-duty LPD officers at school events and meetings, another very necessary expense that we incur. Site improvements personnel is at a whopping 3,608.49%. That elevated percentage is due to some encumbrances associated with pass-through charges for CIP staff that are from the city, so those just haven't caught up, the expenses haven't caught up with the revenues on that so far. They will be reimbursed by grants. So technology, instructional support other is at 179.72%, and these are expenses associated with transportation software, another very important item with transporting students to and from their homes and schools for instructional support. So, the health insurance receipts netted $1,248,552 for February 2024. So that's up slightly from what it cost us in February 2023 as par for the course. That cost was $993,660. But, collections from our premiums totaled $164,090 more than the invoices for the month. So, we're moving in the right direction. We would just like to move a little quicker to kind of take care of that deficit. And I know the question on everyone's mind is, what are we going to do in the future for our insurance coverage? I have completed the application and submitted it for a quote to the Commonwealth of Virginia's statewide health insurance plan. The application requested a start date of July 1st, 2025, to let our current insurance... a start date of July twenty, July first, 2025, to let our current insurance end at the fiscal year, because that contract ends at the fiscal year. They have pushed back. They're uncomfortable with giving a quote for a year out for 2025. So I have adjusted, just to get the quote, a start date of October first, 2024, just to see what those expenses are going to look like. So they are reworking their numbers, and they're going to get it back to us. And as soon as those come in, it'll be hot off the press, straight to the Finance and Facilities Committee, and I will report that out to them, and then it will obviously come up to the board. So that's the end of my report. Sorry, it wasn't exciting, as exciting as the school student reports. But if you have any questions, I'll certainly entertain them.
Question from Ms. James.
Yeah, I have. So most of your variances are, on average, of about twenty-five percent in the operating lines.
Yes, sir.
So it means they're heading for deficit in those lines. So what is the plan between now and June thirtieth to make up for that variance? But that's a significant variance.
So those variances are inclusive of encumbrances, too. So there are encumbered expenses anticipated on those lines. And as those, as those expenses come through, the encumbrances will reduce. So we will, we are keeping a very close watch on our expenses. We are meeting with departments. We have stopped approving purchase orders unless it is school-student related. We are obviously cutting as much expense as we can. So, you know, our goal is to come in at zero. And we're doing our best to do that. We're keeping our eye on the prize, of course.
Somebody who's watching from a layman's perspective, what you're saying is you have prepaid some bills. At the end of the year, it may be balanced out once everything that does settle.
Yes, the future costs are encumbered.
Encumbered.
And so as those costs hit our books, we go in and encumber those pieces. So that, that again lowers that percentage overage of overage percentage.
Going back to the insurance thing, you
Yes, sir.
You said you put July first, 2025 start date, but our new plan starts from January first of
So our current plan doesn't expire until December 2024.
Yes.
So there's, logistically, there is some things we're going to have to work out. I don't know if that means extend our current plan by six months until we get to July first, 2025. The health, the state health insurance plan, they do not operate on calendar year. They only operate on fiscal year, starting in an October fiscal year or a July fiscal year. So we're going to have to do some kind of special, short, shorter
Bridge together.
Contracts in order to get onto their fiscal year type of counting. So those are some of the things that we're going to be working through. It's not going to be easy, but I guarantee you it'll be worth it. So.
I'm gonna, I apologize. Is there early termination fee on our current contract?
So what will happen is we will go ahead and use our current contract, our current health insurance, our self-funded, through December. What we're trying to do is get a quote of how much savings or not savings by putting the October date. So we just, right now, are in the exploratory phase of it. We want to see if it's even worth our while to go that direction, or if we need to pivot and go another direction. So.
The short-term savings could pay for the penalty, and then you continue.
There will be an adjustment cost to move to the statewide plan, and we will have to, we will have to, we will incur those and have to maneuver through those. But hopefully, moving to a different plan will take the volatility out of our current expenses. You know, any given month, we could have really high invoices, and we never know. Moving to a stable plan that we know our expenses every month is going to help in the budgeting process and know what we actually have to spend.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Any other questions?
Dr. Day?
Yeah, there was one person who wanted to speak in public comments, whose name was inadvertently left off the list I was given. So we're going to go back to public comment now and invite Susanna Shedd to come speak to us.
You apologize for leaving you out.
Yeah.
No worries. Well, hello. Good evening. My name is Susanna Shedd, and I am currently Miss Lynchburg 2024. I'm also a student at the University of Lynchburg, and I'm here to speak to you all about adding a medical health professions class in our public high schools. So considering the lack of students that have been able to volunteer in the hospitals, and the lack of medical career advocacy in public schools, there has been drastic shortages in our medical personnel nationwide. There is currently a shortage of almost fifty-four thousand to a hundred and forty thousand physicians in America by 2033. And currently, three hundred thousand physicians have left the medical field as of 2021. Largely, this is due to COVID-19 and the effects that had on our physicians nationwide, but we can do some things about it in our public school system. According to the American Medical Association, forty-five percent of all physicians are fifty-five years of age or older. Their wisdom in the field of medicine is needed, but they're older, and they'd like to retire, and we have to keep them working for longer because we don't have enough medical staff coming in. This issue is an epidemic of its own, and it requires education and encouragement for students to get involved in these medical careers. Lack of education and lack of student volunteer opportunities are both major factors in why students don't want to work in the medical field. The field of medicine can seem so broad with all the two hundred medical careers that you can go into, and no one knows where to start, especially as a student who has no idea what they want to do after high school. So by offering a medical health professions class in these high schools, students would be able to talk about these medical careers and which ones they could go into. There are several careers in medicine that do not require a full eight years of schooling, and students need to be made aware of these opportunities for them. This class could offer field trips where students go and meet healthcare specialists in their fields of medicine to better understand what that job entails. Lastly, these classes could promote student volunteer programs and internships in the hospitals to further the involvement of students in medicine. I would quickly like to emphasize, though, this is not one of those classes that's like a governor class association. I know there's a governor's school here in Lynchburg, but it's not one of those nurse aide or EMT programs. This would be an elective class that students could take within their own high school that just simply teaches about those medical careers that they could pursue. By encouraging students to pursue medicine through this educational course and these student volunteer opportunities, we can have plenty more physicians going into the medical field. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And again, we apologize for leaving you off the original list.
No worries. Have a good night.
Next one is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Are any items you'd like to be taken out?
There, I think, one of the, I'd like to pull one item out, and that's just the minutes from the March 12th meeting. I think there's a number of corrections. So either
Could we approve it pending you can?
I can communicate with Tina.
Yeah.
If, if, if that's fine with me.
Let's do that.
All right. In that case, I have no motion to make.
We got a motion to
I'm, I'm moved to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Dr. Day, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Tros.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston. Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mrs. Preston, I apologize. I forget that you are on the screen. If you have any questions on finance report, I'll come to you now. I left you out at that time without looking at the screen, ma'am. Mrs. Preston, do you have any questions on finance?
No, I have no questions at this time.
Next is school board member
No questions.
Thank you. Next is school board member reports. First is finance and facilities, Dr. Day.
Well, our last meeting was February nineteenth. Our next meeting is April twenty-third. There's nothing new to report.
Thank you. Governor's School, Mrs. Laurie.
Okay, we had on March, oh, let's record that up. Okay. March first, the Foundation's Scholarship Committee interviewed twelve seniors and selected five who will each be awarded a thousand dollar scholarship. So that was wonderful. March ninth, the Central Virginia Regional Science Fair occurred on the campus of CBCC, and the official press release is attached to an email if you would like me to send it out. On March fourteenth, CVGS participated in the Pi Day, which was very, very good. I also attended that. And several schools throughout the month of March were toured for CVGS within the city and the counties. In April, yep, in April, the Virginia State Science Fair will be held at Old Dominion University, and nine students from the Governor's School will be attending who have qualified for this fair with Mrs. Chaimot taking them. April fifteenth, the FBI will present the CVGS seniors as part of the senior capstone. The FBI Evidence Recovery Truck will be parked in CVS, CVGS lot for the lesson. On April twenty-third, the CVGS faculty will meet with select recipients of the two Ann Seewell's Memorial Scholarships. The CVGS Foundation funds this sixty thousand dollar merit and need-based scholarship, which is awarded to one male, one female CVGS seniors each year. And May second is, also on April eighteenth is the annual research symposium. There's, there's a higher number of representatives this year, so there are seventy students. So it'll be held at the University of Lynchburg at the Schule Hall from seven to eight forty-five, if you'd like to attend. And May second is the senior recognition ceremony, which will be held at Heritage High School Theater, beginning at two PM, which they're very excited to be able to use the stage and everything. And our next meeting is not until May first at one o'clock PM.
Thank you. Next one is Laurel and Dr. Carter.
The Laurel School Board, the next meeting, scheduled meeting is May.
STEM, Dr. Carter.
STEM. Well, planning for the juniors for 2024, 25 has already been done. Planning for seniors purchasing caps and gowns, that started. Many of them are, some are going to the military, some to CBCC and other colleges. The internship began January the third with one new location, Virginia Metal Fabrication, which is in Appomattox. And Wednesday, April the twenty-fourth, which is an all-day meeting, we will be doing the internship presentations. And that's always a good meeting to come to. And that's at Central Virginia Community College. The director, Susan Cash, visited eleven high schools with presentations to over five hundred students. And the information session that was held for any students interested in the STEM program, a hundred and fifty people, students were in attendance. So that was great. There was a hundred and eight applications, and there were a total of twenty-seven seats. So it was good. And also, three, three at-large seats available. For the applications, twenty-five were for Amherst, three from Appomattox, twenty-three from Bedford. Campbell County had forty-two, and Lynchburg City fifteen, and the seats available. Amherst has four, Appomattox one, Bedford eight, Campbell County seven, Lynchburg seven. The applications were already reviewed, March the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Students were notified on the twenty-ninth in placement regarding placement. The awards dinner is May fifteenth, and graduation, I forgot the date, will be at the Vine Center. I think it's, and just another thing is that they follow the LCS, the Central Virginia Community Service Calendar. There's a three percent increase this year in tuition, but the STEM pays for that, and the increase doesn't go to the local schools.
Thank you.
So that's
Thank you. Next is lacra, Mr. Tros.
Lacra meeting, we had, the next one is set for April thirtieth at three-thirty. Just to give an update on, I'm sure everyone's aware of this, maybe not, the governor did veto Senate Bill fourteen, which was a sales and use tax, which would allow local community councils to put a referendum in front of the voters in terms of adding a one percent local tax to go towards capital improvement projects for schools and facilities for schools. So that was vetoed. Another bill that was vetoed was House Bill nine fifty-eight, which I'm proud that we did, doesn't really affect us. And that bill was a model guidance on student participation and school boards. And that bill kind of set forth some of the guidance that we already utilize in terms of having school board, our student representatives on our school board. So I'm proud of the fact that we're ahead of the curve on that. But that's really what's going on the legislative front. Again, the next meeting is April thirty to three-thirty.
The governor will be in town tomorrow.
Governor's in town tomorrow at
Business Alliance.
Business Alliance, and I think they say show up. We have to be on the, on the list twelve-thirty.
Yeah, we see you by twelve.
Twelve forty-five. So see you there.
If you can ask.
I'll ask, I'll ask Glenn what happened.
Thank you. Next one is partners in education, Mr. DePaul and Mrs. Laurie.
We, the last event we had, of course, was Pi Day, and it went, it went very well. A lot of different companies were there, from the community, a lot of teachers showed up. There was Pi, and our next meeting is in two days. So it's Thursday, nine o'clock, eight o'clock at Central.
Thank you. Education Foundation, Mr. Tros and Mr. Jaleel.
I think Ms. Wise had a fantastic presentation this evening, and I'm proud of the fact of the work that they're doing at Education Foundation, supporting our state school systems. Another fun fact, I did not know that Leland was going to be presenting. I did not realize that his father was a Mr. Melvin from, I think it was Lincoln Middle School, taught me in shop class. And it goes back to the importance of some of those programs. I kind of clued into vocation. But Mr. Melvin, someone asked me what his first name was. I said, Mr., you know, it's Mr. Melvin. I can distinctly remember him saying, "Learn to solder," and learn some of these electronic things, because they're going to be a space shuttle program, and they're going to need to know, have people know how to do that. And lo and behold, and I saw Leland downtown at lunch, and I had mentioned how, how big of an influence his father was upon me in times. I like to be handy around the house and things of that nature. But it just goes to show you what, how important of an impression the, our instructors, our teachers can make on individuals. And to this day, what is it, forty-some years later, I remember that statement like goes yesterday.
Did you learn to solder?
I did, in fact, recently. Rather than replacing a nine-hundred-and-some-dollar refrigerator that was broken, I figured I couldn't break it anymore, I YouTube things, bought a better soldered gun than I had, got some diodes, and fixed a circuit board for under twenty dollars. And I'm proud to say that refrigerator's still going.
So he was right.
He was right, so much. And again, it gets back to our staff, our instructors, the impressions they make upon their student, our students last a lifetime, and that's why we continue to support them. And we're proud to support them. So, very good.
Thank you. And do they have a senior honors program coming up?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. Senior honors program is coming up to recognize our academic seniors, fifteen from Heritage and fifteen from EC Glass. Don't know the date of that program.
April twenty-eighth, I think.
Usually it's in May.
It's usually
Or Sunday in May or something.
It's April.
We'll get that out. But looking forward to that program. It's a fantastic program.
Thank you, Mr. Tros. Beacon of Hope, Mrs. Preston and Mr. Andrews. Is it April twenty-eighth?
April twenty-eighth.
Yeah, it's April twenty-eighth, I was gonna say.
Randolph College.
Yes.
Beacon of Hope, Mrs. Preston and Mr. Andrews.
Speaking on behalf of Ms. Preston, since she's sick, future centers at both EC Glass and Heritage High School will take students to UVA next week. Interview day for the summer internship program, which was what we've been talking about, will be held next Thursday, April eighteenth, at the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance. Thirty local employers have signed up to interview and host the students. There are about ninety rising juniors and seniors from both high schools that will participate in the month-long internship program, and they will get a stipend during that timeframe also. On Tuesday, April thirtieth, there will be a breakfast and conversation on navigating the path ahead. Beacon, Beacon of Hope will be, it will be held at the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance also, seven-thirty to nine AM. They will be sharing exciting news that morning. So if you're interested in attending, please contact them RSVP. And then, of course, on May fifteenth, May fifteenth, excuse me, is the deadline for their stay close, go for a promise their Stay Close, Go Far Promise scholarships. These are awarded to any graduating senior from LCS that's pursuing college or technical certification program. Students are awarded free tuition at CBCC or an equivalent scholarship, which can be used at LU, University of Lynchburg, Randolph College, Longwood University, Sweetbrier, and Centra School of Nursing. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
You're welcome.
Next one is Ed-Hog Discipline and Policy Review Committee, Dr. Day.
Yeah, several things to report here. So, as you may recall, the, the committee last fall sent out a survey to all of our teachers, staff, bus drivers, asking for their input on a number of issues related to behavior issues at the school and discipline policies. And we are focusing on several things that, that were highlighted by the responses to that. The one that's at the top of the list right now is our cell phone policy. So, we have considered the policies in several neighboring districts, as well as advice from some of our own staff who have experience in neighboring districts. So the committee is getting prepared, it's not ready to make a recommendation to the board yet, but what we are very seriously considering is changing our cell phone policy to prohibit the use of cell phones anytime from the beginning of the school day to the end of the school day. The requirement would be that the phones need to be powered off and out of sight. That would include hall periods, lunchtime, completely off the entire school day. If a student feels they need to communicate, they would proceed to the main office and ask for permission to make a call from there. There will, our intent is that there will be a schedule of responses for first violations, second violations, things like that. The model that we've looked at, after, after, on a second violation or later, a parent would have to come to the school to retrieve the cell phone. And then, it escalates from there. We intend the new policy should take effect in the fall of twenty twenty-four, and we're going to be developing information to provide students, families, and staff about the reasons we feel this is an important policy. Responses to common objections, and we certainly expect that there will be some, it's not going to be popular with students in particular, we understand that, but, but we feel that this is in the best interests of their education. And we will do our best to communicate to students and their families in advance so that they know this is coming. Now, at our next meeting, which is planned for April twenty-five, we want to invite, all right, we intend to invite all school principals to come talk with the committee about this policy, because they're the ones who are going to be on the ground implementing it. And because of that, we're going to hold our meeting a little bit later than we normally do, like most committees, we typically meet at three-thirties in the afternoon. The committee had originally thought we would move the meeting to four thirty to give time for principals to be there, but on the advice of Dr. Edwards, she suggested that actually moving it to four might work better, don't, we don't leave a big dead time in their schedule for the day. So, the plan is to hold the meeting from four to five thirty. Now, what we intend is in the first half hour, we're going to invite Mr. Ferguson, who coordinates the behavior training that is given to our classroom teachers, is he's going to come and present that to everyone who's at that meeting, and then there'll be some question and answer time for him. And then, from four thirty to five thirty, we'll have all the principals here, and we want to invite the full board to come and hear that conversation as well, because eventually the board is going to need to vote on this. And I think it's important that they are part of the discussion of this as we're developing it. So the plan is, on April twenty-fifth, starting at four o'clock here, we will hold this meeting, and again, the entire board is invited and encouraged to come. Again, the first half hour will be Mr. Ferguson talking about our behavior training for teachers, and then the second hour will be conversation with the school principals about the cell phone policy. There's some other things that we've talked a little bit about. We're sending out a letter to all the people that filled out the, the survey in the fall, just to giving them a status report of what the committee's doing, so that they don't have the impression that their responses just went into a black hole or a wastebasket somewhere. And that letter will include a brief summary of, of this pending new cell phone policy that's resulting from their survey. Another thing that's on our agenda is, there's a policy, JCFA, which provides a procedure by which a teacher can ask for a student to be permanently removed from their classroom. And there's a lot of confusion about that policy, and so, another thing we want to do is clarify for our staff what that policy actually does, how it is to be implemented, some of the difficulties in implementing it, because if, if every teacher at the school does not want a certain student in their class, then you've got a problem. So, you, you, there's got to be some qualifications to it. So these are things that we, we want to clarify and communicate back to our teachers, because many of them expressed concerns about disruptive behavior in their classrooms, and feeling helpless about being able to deal with it. So, both the behavior training that Mr. Ferguson is going to tell us about, and then hopefully us being able to clarify that policy will contribute to that as well. So again, our next meeting is April twenty-fifth, starting at four o'clock here.
Questions for Dr. Day? I got some, so this policy, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, don't forget, we talked about all electronics, like the earbuds and watches.
Yeah, yeah, so I wasn't giving the full detailed thing, so, yeah, I think.
So, anybody who's listening, this is still in sort of?
Still being contemplated.
Yes, discussion, there's no decision as well.
Yeah, although, you know, several members of the media have asked about it, and then there've been a couple stories in the media, but I want to be clear, at this point, we're contemplating this policy. At some point, I'm hoping in the next couple months, the committee will be ready to make a recommendation to the board, and then the board will decide what it wants to do with it.
Ultimately, the board has to have?
Of course.
A vote to, for this policy.
Only the full board can change policy.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Is there any discussion about the violence in the classroom in the last meeting?
The one thing that we talked about is there was an interest in, in making, trying to have language that said, any physical violence against other students or teachers would result in an immediate expulsion. But I think the staff is looking into that with regard to what the state law says about those kinds of things. So, we're, haven't taken any action, but the, there was some interest in strengthening the, our responses to physical violence.
Thank you. Academic Success Committee, Mr. Jalil is not here, so Mrs. Lowry?
We were just given a presentation, from the notes that I have down, about just the, the expansion for BASS. So, we're, we're going about through all that stuff, and what the racial demographics would look like, and how the areas were highlighted, and the fact that, you know, it's not just, a highlighted area is not just total children, there's rehab facilities, there's, you got police front fired, I mean, there's just, there's other buildings and stuff in there, so while an area might look large, it's not all students, so, they're just, and just making sure that, the admin makes sure that people understand that, that this is so big, that's a lot of kids, just make sure they understand this is not all children, so.
Thank you. Next one is L one, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-four Division Strategic Plan and Next Steps, Dr. Edwards and.
Okay, so I will kick that one off. In July, when we had our retreat, we had briefly discussed that our five-year district strategic plan would be expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and whether or not we were at that point ready to proceed with next steps. I think we were so involved in Facilities Master Plan and a few other things that we put that on the back burner, but now I've moved it back to the front burner, so that we can at least talk about what we're going to do once June thirtieth comes, and then also what a potential next steps are for our next strategic plan, which is totally up to the board in terms of if it's a three-year or five-year, there's no requirement, except that we have one, and that we discuss and report out. So, there's two parts to this, so the first part is, in June, you do have the option, and divisions have extended their existing plan by one more year, so we do have the option to continue with the existing strategic plan. I did add it, a copy of it in board docs, both the short version, which has the goals, but the longer version, which has all of the objectives and strategies. Many of those things were, have already been completed, and since the board has been adding strategic plan to their board meeting for several years now, we've reported out on some of those. So that is an option, which would buy you time to start the next strategic plan, which would align also with excellence by design and Facilities Master Plan and all of the things. That's an option for the board. If not, we'll need to do something between now and the end of the year, so that we do have something in place for July one. So that's part one. Then part two says even, whichever way you go, there's still some steps. The last time we did a division-wide strategic plan was in January twenty nineteen, and I think we worked from twenty nineteen probably till May to get it all done and written. There was a lot of community involvement, small groups, discussion, refining, writing, coming back. The board pretty much wrote the overall goals, and then administration helped with the rationale, the Equity Task Force helped with the equity habits that's in our goals, and then we had a, a list of objectives and, and things like that. So it's a very intense process, and those other areas came from smaller committees. And again, what we have in board docs for part two is the draft of what we were going to present to you in the fall, so that's why, for the folks who are watching and open that draft document, it is a draft document, that's a, I like to call that a discussion starter of some things that we can do. The dates are from the fall, because that's when we had anticipated starting this process, so we didn't change the dates or anything like that. It's something for the board to consider, and we can certainly go over that. I will say that strategic plans are intense, they are not something that we decide tonight and have written by the next meeting, they really take some refining. And the last one that we did, I will just give a shout out there, we did start smaller. Small is usually good and manageable, but it was just so much community energy that that thing was massive. I'm not suggesting that we go as massive as we did on this last plan, perhaps something a little more targeted and focused. Also, just for our viewing audience, sometimes we see a plan as if it's not in the plan, that means we're not going to do it. And I just want us to think about a strategic plan as a guide for those things that are front and center on your radar, kind of like life, you don't write on your to-do list every single thing you're going to do that day, including tie your shoes, you, you're probably going to tie your shoes anyhow, so that doesn't need to be in the plan. So as we think about things that are in our normal operations, we really want to focus on those innovative, those, the, the things that are giving us the bang for our buck as we, as we go forward. So, I want to take a pause on just, one, let the board have a discussion amongst board members regarding the, oh, I skipped a step, I'm sorry. The one thing that we do have to do in closing out a strategic plan is go back and kind of give an update on goals, objectives met, where we are and things like that. So in, in that existing plan, many of those things we've already talked about in previous board meetings, so we can give a quick summary. Some of them we have not, and then some of them we probably didn't hit, or hit that measurement. So that's first, because that information is foundational data for the next plan, should some of that stuff roll over. So I do want to make, mention that that's something that my team will do with the school board.
Questions for Dr. Edwards?
This seems to me like a pretty big undertaking, and I guess I'm questioning whether this board can complete this by the end of June. And so, I'm thinking that it would be appropriate for us to extend the existing plan for one year, and then, while, while this year and previous years, we've been so focused on the facilities issue, next year, the focus can be on this plan, and of course, we'll still be executing the decisions that we make about facilities, but next year, we can put the bulk of our energy into this. So, I'm prepared to make a motion to that, not making it yet, I'm just saying that that's what I'm thinking, that we ought to just extend the existing plan for one year, may, but we should start the development of the process for the next plan even this year, but it's going to be next year's board that does the bulk of the work.
We got board members not present today.
Yes, I know.
So let's wait till the whole board is there.
And my, my question was sort of piggybacking off his, if we do that, though, does that put us where we wanted to do? We wanted to wait two years, so that everybody was in place, and then there's only one transition. Is that what that would do?
Well, the strategic plan isn't so, isn't that specific about the facilities thing.
Oh.
You need to look at the old plan to see what it's about.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
So, so the, the main categories in the existing plan is student growth and development and success, personal growth development and success, fiscal responsibility, family and community engagement. So you see, it's pretty broad.
Yes, it's very broad.
It's not just specific to facility.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
There's nobody, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, and I did go through it, and I did have some questions for Dr. Edwards or Mr. Dr. Rodica. The, the one point six point six C, how, it talks about increasing the dual enrollment. Is that a duly question, or is that a CTE, or is it something you guys will plan for CTE and dual enrollment to increase that as a post-secondary course offering?
That's something that we've been doing since. We have put this plan in place. One of the things that we looked at was dual enrollment, as well as participation in AP, just up in the bar a little bit more. The CTE Academy coming on board was a bonus, we didn't know about that at the time that we created this plan in twenty nineteen, that wasn't in existence, but getting more kids to do that, yes. So what we would typically do is just, in a, in a quick report out, would be to give you some stats on that.
Okay. All right, and my other question on two point, three point one, staff wellness, I remember before we had, because we have a collaboration with Centra, and they would come in and they would do like these checkups, take your blood, all that kind of stuff, and then you get this. Is that going to be, anything like that going to come back, is this to be a?
We, we haven't done that with Centra, I think we've been more proactive in, with just being mindful about staff mental health, and Day of Wellness, thank you, at Foundation one more time, to take a pause of that for staff wellness, too, and just the job part of, if you think about what the Calendar Committee did, in what are the things that cause staff to just feel angst, and just trying to alleviate some of that, as well as their own personal wellness and things like that. So, a little bit of both, but more on the work inside of it, is what we've been working on with that. Also, it's probably in Section Four, but, and it goes along with staff wellness, trips, slips, and falls and things like that, just making sure that staff are very mindful of hazards to themselves, which we'll go back to the finance part, because then you're into the medical bills and those things as well.
Okay, and two point four one on professional development, and I, and I probably ask this more as a retired teacher than anything else, but I'm sure teachers still think about this. Will this, will this be tiered? For example, the reason I say this is like, there, you have new teachers and teachers who are required, like by principals, to take, to go to certain professional developments, do they want them to be exposed to, to refresh? Do they want them to be exposed to, to refresh or you know, they just forgot whatever, need some of that extra help? But there are so many things, I know like personally, I went on phonics and that's all I taught most of the times. I'm like, I don't wanna go to something else on phonics. Is that gonna be tiered so that you're not recommended by your principal and you're not a new teacher and it's something you do well, you still have to go to professional developments that you already know very well?
There, there are some things that are just required by, one by VDOE that we, we absolutely have to do, but most of the PD that we try to do is tiered and actually that's gonna come up in a conversation that we have later on this agenda, but providing staff, if I'm new to first grade or if I'm new to using Hagerty today was one of those days I got to see a great lesson on that, I might need it at level one versus I need a refresher course like that. And our curriculum department does a great job of working with buildings to do that.
Okay. All right. And I think that, oh, yes, on four point two point two E, do we have a home connection program in mind that you wanna pursue?
I'll get to that one.
And then the other part of that was, yeah, for point five, will this include all the programs LCS had in place? And then that was it.
Yeah. Hold on, let me catch that to you for a second. The quick version, the big version. Don't have that one memorized. Four point, say that one more time.
Four point two point two E.
Four point two point two E. Oh, early childhood making home visits, okay. See, I'm glad I did look at that. We do do some of that. I know the Hutcheson staff does that in the beginning, particularly in the beginning of the year and trying to do that. I don't know if it's everybody though, versus just some children, some families and.
Okay. So, it's not mainly mostly by school, it might be more of a Hutcheson thing.
I know for sure that the Hutcheson staff does it. I'm not sure about.
And I don't have the wording right in front of me, but early childhood is different than pre-K.
Okay.
There's an early childhood program at Hutcheson Early Learning Center and there's also the VPI pre-K classes, some that are at Hutcheson and some that are around in schools such as Paul and Row. So, early childhood is different than pre-K.
Those are three-year-olds?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And younger, yes.
Okay. All right. All right, cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Dr. Edwards? I was thinking of taking a few minutes break if it's okay before we move to the next item.
Well, before we do that, is, what act, what's the first step the board needs to take on this process? The issue of whether to post, to extend the current?
Let me say, there's nobody better than Dr. Edwards to do strategic planning and I'm not saying because you're here, that's, that's how you have done in your previous work life. So, when she came into the district, I was there part of the strategic planning process. She was very methodical, very thorough. I still remember, Dr. Carter, you may remember all those sheets of paper she had on the wall everywhere during part of the planning process. So, we are lucky, we have somebody who can take this forward for us at the right time. So, but.
To answer your question, the most immediate goal that we need is that whether or not we're extending for the year. The second thing would be for board members to take a look at the proposed, we have, we have a draft framework. I think it's always easier if we give you something to look at that you can chew on and then work around. It talks about groups, community engagement, mixing staff and board members and, and parents and family members as part of those groups. But what I think what we really need to do as we look forward to the next strategic plan is to really map out not only goals and objectives, but how are decisions made? That's really important and key, especially for our families. Are these decisions made by the small committees? Are they made by the full group? Who's doing the writing? How are we doing the reporting out? What can the community expect in terms of as we go through this process? What does communication about it? What does input and feedback really look like? Is it a vote, majority rule? Is it considerations, those types of things? So, to have not only a well-ordered plan, but a well-ordered process for doing the plan will help us meet our timeline goals in a hurry. The other thing is just it should be data-rich from the beginning. So, we're not doing plans based on how we feel, but we're really looking at what are the needs of our kids, our families, our division at the current state and then where do we wanna be three, five years from now, whatever timeframe that the board sees. And that's, that's kinda broad, inclusive of all children.
And including all the stakeholders.
Yes, and that's why it takes the amount of time it does take because it, we, we did a lot of nights and a lot of community conversations in different venues.
And I would expect that as we develop this plan, it's going to be informed by how our facilities decisions are playing out, what we can expect to be on the ground and usable over the next five years. That's gonna influence.
It looks like to me you've voluntold yourself and Dr. Edwards to lead this effort. I'm just.
I didn't say a thing.
Should we take a couple of minutes break? And we'll be back.
Five minutes?
Five, five minutes should be, five minutes is fine. Five minutes, five minutes break. We'll be back.
Turn it over to Mr. Dooley to talk about the Perkins Grant.
All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time this evening and allowing me to do pretty much one of my favorite things in the world and that is talk to you about career and technical education with Lynchburg City Schools. What I'm gonna do tonight is I'm gonna be talking about some good things that we've got going on. Some of the Heritage and EC Glass, your student representatives stole a little bit of my thunder, but they did have much better graphics than I do, so I'm glad that they did show that. Also, gonna talk about our annual performance report, cause it was really good, so I always wanna give you some good news before I ask you for something, ask you for your signature. So, if we're gonna continue, I think my PowerPoint people are downstairs working. Just wanna show you some student successes we have going on right now and again, some of this was talked about earlier. This weekend, we have students going from Linkhorn Middle and Sandusky Middle School to Virginia Beach to compete in the state competition for FCC LA. That goes along with our family and consumer science classes. Then, next weekend, we have students from Heritage and EC Glass going to Skills USA States in Virginia Beach. We have twenty students going. They'll be competing in cybersecurity, cosmetology, criminal justice, CPR and drafting. And we also have one that's gonna be doing technical math and we also have one that's gonna be doing extre, ext, extemporaneous speaking, that's what it is. That's something I could not do, obviously. But then the most exciting that we've got for right now, and all of the, those students that we just mentioned have the opportunity to go to nationals and we'll find out on those weekends, but we have had some students already compete at the state level in DECA as was, as our Heritage student told us. And these two students are gonna be traveling to Anaheim, California at the end of the month and they're gonna be competing in the DECA National Conference. The nice thing is that if they're gonna get to see some things, you know, go out there and compete, they're also only about a fifteen-minute walk from Disneyland. So, hoping that they will get some of these opportunities, cause these young, young students have done an exceptional job and they deserve to get to celebrate. I'll tell you, from a personal standpoint, taking these students to these competitions are great. They get to go in there and compete, but when we go to Virginia Beach, a lot of those students will see the ocean for the first time. And to get to give these students that opportunity, that's, that's really the most meaningful point of it. So, just wanted to share that with you. Something I don't have on the slide is, again, one of the students talked about, we did have a very successful career fair on March twenty-seventh at EC Glass. We had both high schools participate. We had over three hundred seniors come through and then we brought CTE classes and some other classes through. So, all in all, we had over five hundred students come through. Economic development and tourism gave out cinch bags to all the students and we gave out over five, five hundred bags that day. Beacon of Hope went and worked with our seniors for, uh, working on resumes, so it was really a community effort. And we had over forty-five businesses, colleges, military and local agencies come and participate. So, I was really excited about that and could not go without saying this and Dr. Edwards knows this, Ms. Margaret Ford at, at EC Glass, the head of maintenance over there, we couldn't have pulled it off without her. So, she did an amazing job and she's usually the unsung hero, so I really wanted to just point that out to her, but you all, that, that, we really, it was a community effort coming together, just like Dr. Edwards talked about at the breakfast for the superintendent, about the triangle of us all coming together. That was a perfect example and I stole her thunder about that, cause I've already heard her talk, say that before, too. I thought it sounded good, so I thought I would say it. So, all right, to move on to our annual performance report. This comes out every year and it tells us how we did compared to this, comparatively to the state standards over the last school year. And this was for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So, looking at it, just wanna point out to you, if, if a student, and I think they may have moved a little four, yeah, four-year graduation rate up at the top, if you can go into the next slide, there you go. You can see that a CTE completer, that means a student that goes into a CTE program and takes at least a sequence, two classes together. Of the students that did that, we had a ninety-eight percent graduation rate of those students. We had a hundred and ten out of a hundred and twelve, which exceeded what the state standard was of ninety-four. So, when you know, people ask you, why should we support career and technical education? Yeah, we talk about that they get jobs, we give them skills. Those students also graduate. They buy into what they're doing, they have a reason to come to school, they, a lot of the CTE programs are the reasons these students do come to school. So, I just, you know, wanted to share that with you. Then, if you look down below, you see how they do on SOL standards. And again, you can see that they are far exceeding the numbers of, of our normal students. And then you have our special populations down at the bottom that talk about their On the next page, we talk about post-program placement and that means these students that are survey, they survey students a year after graduating and we find out if they're going to go, if they're in the military, if they're employed, are they further in education or sometime of part-time transition indicator. And you can see that ninety-two percent of our students that participated are, are following some sign of leave. They're not just going out after high school and sitting on the couch playing Xbox. You know, they are starting to do the, the CTE completers are going out, they are becoming the makers in our society. This standard fell just a little bit below the state standard, but I'm gonna say this, this was my first full year here, so I feel like. So I feel like we've done a good job working with counselors to kind of notice, you know, what, what do we need to do? What do we need to, you know, get these more students involved? So I'm hoping that number will go up. You see that we had a 77, almost 78% response rate. That means of students, and I actually personally called them last summer to ask them the series of questions the DOE give us. And I felt that it was very refreshing, very enlightening on my part to do that. I'd never done that before in this position. I'd always had someone, a secretary or someone did it. But last year, being my first year in Lynchburg, I wanted to get the response. And it was amazing to hear the response of the students and sometimes the parents talking about how meaningful their CTE teacher was to them and what an influence they were in high school. We look down at non-traditional program concentration. These are talking about more like, you know, if you see a female student in a carpentry class or a male student in a cosmetology class, trying to get a better mix of that. Our percentage is fairly low there, but the state standard, I believe, and I think this will be addressed, is fairly high. You know, you're not going to see 28% of a, of a non-traditional student when you walk into a class. We would love to say that, but, you know, one thing, students have so many interests now, they can find what they want. So, but we do hope to bring that up, and again, working with counselors, talking about identifying non-traditional students, and if a non-traditional student, a female, is interested in carpentry, we need to encourage that. Because that student's probably going to be a little shy about going in there because it is non-traditional for them. So that, that's stuff that we're, numbers that we're hoping to improve. Next is the participation in the work-based learning. It's hard to see it. Okay, at the top. Next is that they received a credential in their program. You see 94% of our students received it, with the state standard being 65%. So again, that's really, really good as far as special populations, those students, that was a 9, almost a 92%. Participating in work-based learning activities, which means like clinicals for our nursing and our dental students. We're hoping to start doing apprenticeships, the internships that Beacon of Hope does. They've never coordinated with the school system. So those students that are getting, doing these internships have never gotten the credit on the DOE end of it. So working with Laura Hamilton and Beacon of Hope, we're now working together and communicating. So now those students are going to get credit, and you'll see these numbers go up next year as well. And again, you see the all completers and special populations. And then finally, the technical attainment. Students in CTE classes have to pass competencies. They have to show competency and skills. And as you can see, we're at 100% on that. Our, our teachers teach their skills. That is what they know that, that the students are judged on. Those skills are what help them pass the industry credentials. And again, you see special populations, again, those students are passing at 100% rate as well, getting those credentials. And it shows the extra effort that our teachers will go to, to actually work with these students to make sure that they do attain those skills. So finally, you can see that, that for the most part, we met every one of our standards except for two. One, we barely missed as far as the excuse me, my allergies are really getting into me. One is the, that we missed was the post-program placement and then the non-traditional program concentration. All right. Any questions on the annual performance summary? And I'm sorry for stumbling through that. That's the first time I've ever actually presented it in public to someone.
Questions for Mr. Dooley?
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, because I like that, one of the things that, for all the asked me when I was interviewed for the school board was, okay, in Norfolk, their numbers are so high, how, what can we do here? And I'm all about the CET program, so I was so glad to hear that you guys already had something going on the ball. You were new on the job, but you've done an excellent job. So, but one of the things I also did was I visited the dual enrollment with both Heritage and EC Glass kids at CVCC. And I was surprised that not more kids do the dual enrollment because their response to it was, the students, was that they absolutely loved it, and they were graduating with an associate's degree. So that, and we have the CTE, you know, yeah, with, yeah, with them anyway. So I was just wondering if there will be any other push for, you know, the CTE encouraging kids to do dual enrollment as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I know that we've had discussion recently with criminal justice. We had hoped to do that next year, but really kind of with the freeze on adding new dual enrollment classes. We kind of held off on that for right now, but, you know, with criminal justice, with our nursing programs, we would like to do that. Certainly with our drafting programs at EC Glass. You know, a lot of it is having the teacher in place that has a master's degree to be able to do that, to work with the community college. But I would love, any of the programs that we could dual enroll, I would love to do that. We are beginning our Teachers for Tomorrow, Getting Our Teachers for Tomorrow program coming back next year. And they, we'll be dual enrollment, dual-enrolling that program with University of Lynchburg because they're giving us such a great deal. It's $25 a credit hour to do it with them. So absolutely, I think that's very important. You know, as far as the CT Academy, we're trying to get students over there. Just, you know, that's, it's, it's hard to get a student to get on a bus to go somewhere to want to do something. So we're, you know, we're going to try to set up some field trips to go over there and tour the facilities because talking with Jason Clark and C, at CVCC, he said of all the schools that participated in the CT Academy, none of them have ever brought students through to take a tour of it ahead of time to look at. And I said, well, that just seems like a no-brainer that we should be doing that. So we're going to hopefully be doing that to hopefully try to increase the enrollment in that as well.
Yeah, I think because of the students, when I talked to them, they said, well, our friends don't want to do it because they said they won't see their friends as much. They won't have time for sports, but they're like, we see our friends still and we have more time for sports. And so, yeah, so that's great, and you have done a wonderful job. I talked to several people at the career fair that were there, students, and, and I encouraged some of them. If they, I asked, are you involved in CTE and all this kind of stuff? So most said yes, some said no. I said, well, you got to check it out, you know, and so, so, but you did a fabulous job. So thank you to all that you guys did for that.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, but, you know, I argue with Dr. Edwards all the time about which one of us has the better job in Lynchburg City. And I'm convinced it's me, and it's because I get to work for her. And, and with Reed and Amy and, and, you know, the people that, and the school board to support. But then also the teachers are just amazing. You know, we have really good teachers. And I, I feel like my best job is to be a cheerleader. And I, and I like to shout to the skies with, you know, about our students, but, you know, we can't forget about the teachers that are behind the students that are getting there as well.
Well, it's all about the kids, and everybody in LCS is doing a good job at getting these kids into CTE and dual enrollment and, you know.
I really appreciate that, and again, you know, I think, you know, the, you get a student involved in CTE, it doesn't mean they're not going to college.
That's right.
And that's the biggest thing that we're trying to get, you know, people to realize that, you know, there's just as many opportunities for post-secondary education in CTE as there is just in academics as well.
Yes, very much so. Thank you.
I noticed on the first slide, when you talked about the FCC LA going to Virginia Beach, that Linkhorn and Sandusky were mentioned, was Dunbar not, didn't have any participation in that?
They, Dunbar, right now, the teacher there who's amazing, and we want to get her licensed, is basically a full-time sub there and, and as good a teacher as I've seen. But get her a license, so it kind of makes it hard for her to be able to do that, and she was just getting introduced to FCC LA this year. But honestly, every time I walked into her classroom, she seemed to be talking about FCC LA to the students. So I'm hoping that next year, we'll have students from all three middle schools. And I'm hoping that we'll have her a license to be able to teach, too.
And the other thing, and that's great that you found the opportunity to work with the Beacon of Hope, especially if those students are participating in that, that they can get that credit also.
Right. And, you know, and again, I just think it was the lack of communication, that they didn't realize that we needed that data and, you know, we weren't communicating that to them as well. And again, keeping that data and tracking it is something that's only in the last few years that DOE has been doing.
That's good.
Okay.
I, I just have one comment.
Sure.
I know, you said there's a life after CT, and I'm your prime example. I started learning welding, and that's, you may not know, I'm, I'm, I'm very good in doing route paths in welding. Ended up in mechanical engineering degree, but this degree doesn't take you that far. But that welding skill I had gave me a job with a gas pipeline construction company, which opened up all the doors, and I'm sitting here with you tonight. So trades do help, and they give you high-paying jobs and open up global opportunities, not only in the United States, global.
And, and just, just to go to what Mr. Tross, I heard him saying earlier, too. In the last six months, I fixed my refrigerator on a YouTube video as well, and it's still running. So, you know, it's, but learning that mechanical, well-being in, in that high school is what learned me to do things with my hands. And having a shop class, you know, which I hate saying shop because we don't call them shop class anymore. Just like we don't call family consumer science home ec, you know, they're, they're, they're different. But those are the skills that, again, that, like you said, they can lead to a career, but they can also lead to, you know, nowadays, to quote Mike Rowe, you know, it'll, it'll cost you as much to get a plumber as it will a psychiatrist. And after getting a plumber, you're going to need a psychiatrist.
Amen.
Automobile industry, you can go in construction, you can go in pipeline. Opens a whole bunch of fields, respective of the college degree I had. Dr. Carter?
Yeah, I forgot, but, um.
That's all right.
Well, maybe I'll say this, but I know when I was in the eighth grade, we only had two, we only had one choice. For the females, we had to go to the home ec and cooking and whatever. And I wanted so much to do shop and the plumbing and all of that. And I think if I had of, maybe that was providential, that I probably would have done something in construction. I love that. But that wasn't the reason, but that wasn't the reason why I wanted to say something.
Let me ask one question.
Okay, then it may come back.
So all program completer, your number was 200 in 2020, 200 plus minus. And then in 2022, 23, it went down to like 112. So is the COVID effect or?
It's a, it's a change in the designation by DOE. DOE used to call completers any student at any grade level that had completed a sequence. Now they just do the seniors and the others are called concentrators. So it's the way that we break out the data now.
Dr. Carter?
Just for, if there's a student or a parent listening, what is the latest grade that a student can, the latest opportunity for a student to enter a CTE program?
Well, if they attend the CTE Academy, they can go their senior year if they haven't done one, and they could do a CT Academy there and get the sequence to go. Most of them still have to start by their junior year to be able to get two classes. Being that we are on a A B schedule this year and a seven-period schedule next year. Excuse me, not on the semester schedule, that you would have to do one first-level junior year, second-level, so, uh, senior year. My hope is that we start bringing that back down, that we start opening these classes up more to freshmen and sophomores. But that's just a mindset that we've got to work within the schools and with the counselors of, you know, because, again, we've got to get the students to graduate. So we've got a lot of stuff that you've got to get in that freshman and sophomore year. But my fear is that we lose a lot of those students' interest in CTE that they may have gained in the middle school. And, you know, and with Dr. Edwards and I wanting to start that all the way down into the elementary school, we don't want them to get to high school, and then there'll be a gap between ninth and 10th grade before they're able to start getting into a CTE program.
Thank you.
And to go back to what you were saying, too, about wishing you were in the welding class, one of those, I will say this as a proud male, women and females are much better welders and mechanics than men are. They have the patience, they have the precision.
Much better.
Yeah, fine motor skills.
And if we could get them more in, you know, more females into these programs, they could make a killing. Really, the money is out there. It's, it's, it is really, you know, that's why DOE is really pushing, trying to, to get these non-traditional students in these traditional, in these programs.
And one last question, do they talk to their counselors? Is that where it starts, the conversation starts, or is it just a class offered?
Yeah, it starts in, in middle school. And again, we're working with the Regional Business Alliance. Regional Business Alliance next year is going to do a fair, a career fair for our middle school students. So they develop what's called an academic career plan in seventh grade. And that's kind of talking about the pathway that they want to follow when they get to high school. And then when they get into the 10th grade, they meet with their counselor again and see, well, is this the path I want to stay on? Or, you know, now is the time, if I'm going to make a new direction, this is the time that I take that direction.
Okay, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dooley. Appreciate you coming.
Oh, yeah, now for the.
You got more, okay.
And that, this is just really a, a summary. I will not go through this 40 to 50-some pages of Perkins. If you are really interested in it at any point, I'd be happy to sit down with you and talk to you about it. But the Perkins Act, it's basically that we have to present this to a local advisory board, which we will be meeting on Thursday. But we also, we'd like to present it to the school board to say, be open and communicate to say, this is, you know, this is what we're doing, this is what we plan on doing with these funds. And we also have to get your signature, so that's just the easiest way to do it as well. But since the local plan consists of lengthy document, the CTE department is providing you the summary that explains the various sections and highlights of the information that is required in the plan. Okay, so part one is the certification and assurances. This is where we get the signature page. This is basically saying that we will abide by all the rules that DOE and the federal government sets. And just to let you know, Perkins is a federal grant that's distributed by the state. So when we get to the end and I start talking to you about the numbers and where we, what we're looking to spend, we still do not know our allocation for next year. We never know this before, the submission date, which is April 30th, this has to be submitted. So we all submit the plans, everybody across the state submits the plans by April 30th. It sits there in the queue at DOE, then they send out all the new allocations to us. Then they deny everybody's application, send it back, and we have to redo the numbers, and then we send it back. Hopefully that'll happen in May. Last year I looked, and I think I resubmitted on June 26th. Because you remember, there was no budget being had at the end, at last summer, so it got really touching there. But, but just to let you know, this, when we get to that end part, Schedule 17 and 18, these are last year's numbers that we're looking at. Yes, sir.
I, I need some preliminary explanation. What is the Perkins thing about?
Perkins, it's Carl Perkins, Blue Suede Shoes, left this money to the government to propose career and technical education. It has been renewed every year. I cannot remember when it first.
This is a grant program?
But it is a grant program, and so every year I have to provide, and that's what I'm going to go through here and kind of talk to you about the information that I have to provide. And then we submit it, and like I said, then it gets denied for the, for the money reason. But also, they may find something else in there they don't like. And, and the nice thing about CTE with DOE, they are not gotcha-type people. They work with you. They call and say, hey, they'll call you on the phone and say, here, here's what you need to change in your plan to make it be approved.
Okay, thank you.
But it is, that's what it basically is. It's a grant. So part two is our performance assessment. That is what I just went over with you with our annual performance. Basically, that, that data is all broken down into the Perkins Plan, and it, it looks very similar to what I just showed you. Part three is when we start getting into the, the meat, the bones of it. Schedules one and two, and when I say a schedule, and again, you all have this, a copy of it. But it's kind of just looking like, information like this. It's basically a, a, a survey or something that I have to fill in, and then a narrative explanation afterwards. So, and again, you all have been provided with all of this, and if anytime you want to look through it, you're more than welcome. And if you do, I advise you to take the summary page beside it and kind of look so you know that, what, what you're looking at. But Schedules one and two lists the individuals involved in the development of the implementation plan, how they were involved. The list includes representatives of following stakeholders, business, industry, students, parents, the Workforce Investment Council, special populations, community college, labor organizations, and out-of-school homeless and at-risk youth. So we try to have someone represent pretty much everyone on, on, on that, and these are all on our advisory committee as well. Since the June, like I said, since many of them are on there. Schedule three lists all the career pathways and plans of studies that we have submitted over the years, probably going back to the last 12, 15 years. And then it talks about what, you know, pathways we will, we, every year we have to say, this is a program that we want to implement. Even if we don't, we have to permit, submit a new plan of study to DOE to say, this is something that we're looking at. This year submitted, but we are actually adding game design at Heritage High School next year. It'll be open to both high schools, but we were lucky enough to hire a young man to replace a tech ed teacher. He did not have a tech ed endorsement because they're, they're almost impossible to find now. But he was a recent graduate from George Mason with a game design degree. Which, having someone with a game design degree teach game design, that's unheard of. So he is excited about it. We've been buying materials and equipment for next year. And my understanding is the students are really, really liking this and looking forward to taking the program. So that, that's what we'll be submitting. I have also, I've already had that plan. I have also, I've already had that plan of study has been uh, given to CBCC so they could add this post-secondary part to it. They've approved it and it's been submitted to DOE and they have approved it as an approved course that we can offer next year.
Cool.
Will that be like an esports type course?
They're going to be building what esports plays. Yeah, they're going to be designing the games that they will be doing. Now, that said, they're going to want to play them once they get them. So we have got, and I want you all, hopefully next year we can take a tour there. But they've got chairs that light up, computers that you can see in, that have all the flowing lights and everything. So it's going to be a spectacle when you walk into this room. I really want it to pop and I think it's going to.
I have a question for you. Well, the CTMS, is there a place that like the the DOE goes or that any parent goes or whatever? They can see the list of all the the pathways, the classes and stuff?
What's that?
On the CTMS.
The CTMS, I'm really not even sure what CTM stands for.
Oh, okay.
But what you're talking about is the CTE Resource Center, the Verso site. And that's a site that you can go to that breaks down every program and every pathway and it shows you every competency for every program as well.
Is that on our LCS website?
No, but it wouldn't be a bad idea of linking it on there at some point.
Say, yeah, that way it'd be easy for parents to find.
That's a great idea. And again, what we're hoping to do, we've talked to some of our video classes, is that within the next year, hopefully, that on our website, if you go and want to look at a CTE class, instead of reading about it, you can click on a video and you'll have a student and a teacher telling you about that class.
That's great.
Yeah. Anything we can do to attract and, you know, sell the programs.
Mr. Dooley, I feel bad for you, you've got allergies flaring up. If you want us to just read, you don't have to speak, we'll just read and we just.
I'll fly through them, I'm pretty good. I'm I'm always like this, so it's unfortunately, it's my allergies are year long, they just get worse at this point. But thank you so much, but I'll just briefly mention, put top on them instead of going into detail. Schedule four lists the special populations that LCS serves in the career and technical education programs. Schedule five describes how CTE will strengthen and improve academic and technical skills for CTE students. So schedule six describes how LCS via the CTE Department will provide a strong, focused learning program for LCS students. Schedule seven lists the way CTE will use Perkins Funds to develop, improve, or expand the use of technology. List the types of professional development activities that we can do with our teachers. Uh, we'll let you know that last November, that we were able to take six teachers and two counselors, one from each high school to Phoenix to the National CTE Conference. My goal is that we take a group of stu- of teachers and counselors out there every year. I think it's very important to have the counselors and the teachers together doing this so that the counselors are learning more about what CTE is all about.
That's a good idea.
Schedule nine describes how LCS is required to evaluate career and technical education programs. Schedule ten provides a checklist of showing how LCS will improve, expand, and modernize CTE programs. And again, a lot of this is with our CTE Advisory Committee. Eleven describes how LCS will use data to make decisions on program improvement. Schedule twelve. Provides information that on employment counseling, job placement, job finding, skills development, and LCS provide, that LCS provides for students. These schedules list the services that are provided, sources for information, and the methodology methodology used for providing these services. Thirteen describes how we'll ensure equity provisions of the General Education Provision Act. And that's really, you know, how Lynchburg City does it. It's not just specific to career and technical. Fourteen provides labor market information, and this is something we provide every other year. Fifteen, we do not have to worry about that because we do not participate in a regional academy. We do the CTE Academy, but that's still not considered a regional because we don't have, we're not paying employees, we're not paying the teachers and everything there. And schedule six summarizes the amount of state and local money LCS spends on career and technical and adult education personnel, instructional supplies, and other related costs. So now to the exciting part. Part four, it provides a general description of how LCS plans to expand, expend monies received through Perkins during the twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. To simplify, a list of items is provided below outlining the proposed use of Perkins money. We will do twenty thousand dollars towards professional developments. We will do eighteen thousand dollars. Okay, eighteen thousand to pay travel expenses for students and teachers to travel to conferences. Hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for replacement of equipment such as computers, three D printers, welders, alignment machines, kitchen equipment, tools, et cetera. Forty thousand to provide for buying software. This is like for Adobe, these type of things that we can buy, we have to buy licenses for. And then five thousand to address one of those deficits that we had in the performance for recruiting non-traditional students. And again, I apologize for my voice and everything tonight. Um, but again, I appreciate you all bearing with me through this. Um, it's it's very important that, you know, that you all know this information so that way if our stakeholders are asking you about it, you can tell them that you are, you do know what, you know, the Perkins Funds are used for. But I'd be happy to take any other questions you might have.
Thank you for everything you do. And I think I was asking Dr. Edwards, is this an action item, but it looks like it's not.
Oh, no, no, no. If y'all want to, if y'all want to make me feel good and vote, y'all can.
We vote for you, Robbie, we vote for you.
Thank you all again, I really appreciate it. Thank you all for your continued support.
Appreciate your.
Everybody's good signing off on this one.
Do we have to go through the same process as every other?
What? Like, uh, Dr. Edwards, it's your choice, you want to put Ms. Cruz first?
World Language for one hundred.
All right, let's do that.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight. I will be brief, um, just bringing to you, um, the secondary world languages textbook adoption. Um, I know I came to you not long ago to ask about literacy. Um, and that was something that was pushed forward very early on for, well, early on this year for us that we weren't necessarily expecting, so we had already started the process of the world textbook, or the world languages textbook adoption. Um, and of course, we do that for every seven year cycle. So I'm going to go over a few things with you tonight and you can ask me any questions. And if I don't have the answer, I'll get back to you. I don't always have that either, so. Uh, every seven years, the Virginia Department of Education revises the world languages standards, so our SOLs that we follow. A textbook adoption committee, as well as all our world language teachers, administration, parents, community members, have the opportunity to complete a textbook review process. The textbook adoption committee made their recommendation and made them available for all teachers, administration, parents, and community members to view on January thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. The textbook committee has made recommendations to the Department of Curriculum and Instruction for adoption and for future purchase. World language textbook adoption may be purchased for use for a seven year period. The selected textbooks were based on their correlation with the standards of learning, the quality of the content, additional materials, and their appropriateness for students related to readability, illustrations, and diagrams. The selection will support the goal of the Virginia Department of Education for world language students to have effective and meaningful interaction with others, whether or not, um, whether on another continent, in another country, or in their own neighborhood. Following a review by the above mentioned, the Department of Curriculum and Instruction accepted the recommendations for those future adoptions. So tonight, we are seeking approval of the process and adoption choices, but not purchasing at this time. The um, the contracts with each publisher and vendor are good for seven years upon your board approval and posting of the contracts approval when the funding again is available. So we had selections for our four languages that are, that are offered. And again, this process started in September and has carried into February, so very, very extensive in process. So French, German, Latin, and Spanish, we have had on the table. And of course, we have AP options for that as well. So for all of our languages as a supplemental, this is school is what was selected. And for French, German, Spanish, for levels one through four, Carnegie Learning was selected. And for the AP selections for French, German, Spanish, we had Vista Learning, excuse me, Vista Higher Learning. And for Latin alone, we had Hands Up Education, and again, this is school as the supplemental. So it was a great deal of work that went into all of this. Um, and we, we wanted to make sure that we bring it to you so that this cycle doesn't have to be repeated again by the team. And again, I I don't take any ownership for this. We have a wonderful CNI team, we have wonderful educators, we have wonderful community members. Um, and this was opened up. And I will say that the teachers, when they were reviewing the textbooks, they were very thorough, spent a great deal of time doing that, and considered what would be user friendly for all teachers and would most likely benefit the students in learning these world languages. So again, we want to give the the best possible opportunity to our students, but we also want to respect the work that was done. So that's why I'm presenting to you tonight for that approval, not for purchase again, but for the approval. So if you if you all do that, we can push forward with that seven year cycle.
Is this an action item?
It was not listed as an action item, but do you need approval to go ahead?
Yes.
I thought it was.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it information?
It is listed as information because we normally do it for two meetings. Um, but I'm a speak for Jen. If we get the approval, what does that mean? We can go ahead and purchase the materials and start doing?
It means that city, this city can go ahead and post and they can let the vendors know respectfully um, so that those postings can be done and we could approve the seven year cycle when we are willing and ready to purchase those materials.
Let's make a motion to make it action, then we do the discussion.
Okay.
So I'm going to, I move that we make this an action item?
Exactly, yeah.
Dr. Day, Mr. Andrews, now the discussion, Mrs. Laurie, go ahead.
My only question is, and I think I talked to Kat about this when I looked at them too, was we have so many kids coming into not only America, but into our state and into our city that don't speak English. Is there a plan to put English as a language on there? And that sounds weird because we're in America, but there's a lot of people that come that just don't speak the language.
You're absolutely right, and our our Ls population has increased drastically. Um, and Mr. Kenneth Burrows is doing a wonderful job with that. So part of our adoptions, when we go through these processes, are to make sure that we are meeting the needs of students. Even with our literacy textbook adoption, it was to meet the needs. That was one of the things that was great about that adoption in itself. But that is the goal of our Ls program and enhancing that and growing the program overall to make sure that we're reaching families and making sure we're bridging that gap um, for those language barriers that we are seeing each and every day.
So that sounds like a separate program from the language.
Our EL program is a separate program from our language because again, in building that that base knowledge, that foundation, the key is to build good core instruction. So while we're ensuring that good quality core instruction and immersing them in the language, we are building upon those skills, just as we would be for immersing our students in their first language, with that being English, with them having a good quality foundation, that only enhances their abilities and their opportunities for the world languages.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The discussion, Madam Clark, would you please call the role?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now it's an action item, is there a motion to, is there a motion to approve it?
Approve.
Mrs. Laurie? Mr. Andrews, any discussion? Madam Clark, would you please call the role?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yeah, yeah.
And Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Cruz.
Thank you all so much.
Next is a.
Calendar?
Calendar.
Okay, don't don't run away, Ms. Cruz, I might need your help. Okay. Oh, no, wherever you feel comfortable, but um. Due to the very mild winter we had, we did not use very many snow days. I think the only one we had was for staff on a PD day in in January and even fewer two hour delays than we have used in the past. Um, so we have a couple of recommendations to alter the end of the year calendar a little differently than we did last year. Last year, we altered it um, for staff and students. But we bring to you this need for time. Um, one of the things we hear teachers say or educators say is, we need more time, we need more time. And I will say, just in my work with the Division Literacy Plan and looking at all the things that have to happen, you just talked about world language standards and I know more standards are coming up. We did VIVAS, all-in tutoring, all the things, there's not enough time. So we have a proposal here on Board Docs to um, basically take a week back. We have four days after Memorial Day that the students would um, be in school. And we want to just move that back and have the last day for students be that Friday, the twenty-fourth, instead of the thirty-first. But keep our staff for those four days and give them the gift of time. And this will allow us to get our staff at the K eight or K five more level with the literacy work that they are going to have to do. Uh, particularly, we have the materials in. And one of the things we learned from our neighbors when we said, what didn't work, tell us that, so we don't do that. It's training, training, training. The earlier we can get the training and materials in the hands of the teachers and give them time to prep for the next year. So what you see um, down here, and and Ms. Cruz knew that I was going to do this, so she has a very elaborate, I think somebody differentiated plan for everyone, um, including our secondary staff who have other things that they need to to work on. Um, graduation would stay the same on that Sunday for both high schools. And the high school staff will have, to work that Sunday, will have that thirty-first off. But we have some adjustments. We have sort of floated that a little bit with the building principles in advance just so that we didn't blow up their world and catch them off guard um, in terms of SOL testing, AP testing, uh, senior exams, and transportation. We wanted to make sure we looked at every possible thing before bringing it to you all, um, just to make, because it is a short period of time to to put that in play. So this is what we have available if you all approve it. Scott and Austin have done a great job of, you know, we have our calendars on on our website. They can update that calendar and change it.
Well, question is, is it PLC planning or is it the professional development, somebody coming in and?
It's, yes, a little bit of all of that, it's differentiated. So for the new program and it's probably having the company come in and work with here are, and I think for literacy, we talked about, there's just so much. Here are all your resources and how to prioritize what to use and to do those things. But at the secondary level, they may have to work, think about like art teachers that don't get the opportunity to work together, music teachers, um, don't, that's different, so we want to give them time too.
It says last day for pre-K through eighth teachers?
Eighth grade, yeah.
So what does it?
Yeah. Why, why is it different? Because it's it's actually the same as our existing schedule. So high school teachers who work on that weekend to do the graduation, that's their PL day. And everybody else is during a work week. So we used to have a weird Saturday for everybody that we sort of went away from it with the feedback from from staff. Yeah.
Graduation on June two, uh, second will be in City Stadium?
Mm-hmm.
And is EC glass first or Heritage High School in the morning?
Glasses first.
The glasses in the morning, it starts at eight o'clock? You know the details or is it too premature?
So I think it's starting at eight-thirty and Heritage eleven-thirty?
Glass eight-thirty and Heritage eleven-thirty.
They'll have their graduation central websites with all the, all the things.
Is there, would you like an action?
I would love action.
Okay.
Well, first we'll have to make it an action item.
It is an action item.
It is an action.
So this is an action item.
It is an action item.
Okay, there's a motion to approve as recommended by the superintendent.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie, Dr. Carter, any discussion on this motion? Madam Clark, would you please call the role?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston? Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we move to item oh-one. Dr. Edwards.
Okay, superintendent comments. It seems like March was a long, long time ago, but not, not too far ago. As I'm looking at all the things that I've, you know, participated in and been, and been involved in, much of them are community-supported and just going down the list. Thank you to the board members that came to Southern Regional Network and Dr. Brown for joining us and doing a presentation on LCS Restore for Region Five. We have a lot of folks who are interested in what we are doing and have reached out with that. As always, breakfast with the superintendent and Pi Day, which were on the same day, were both great, just to work with the community in the morning and just all the support that they have for our students. And in the afternoon, it was a nice treat to have teachers and business working together at the, this is what we could do at the classroom level. So thanks to those groups. Did get to go to Paramount's Literacy, Science Innovation Night, always great. And Ms. Pugh and I had the opportunity of working with our little scientist at Desi and their science project. So we probably are looking at the next excellence with science winners because they did a great job of testing their own hypotheses there. Again, thanking the Ed Foundation for the Morning of Wellness. We are already scheduled for the Morning of Wellness next year. Big hit, and we love that they do that. Optimist Club Elementary Youth Awards, as well as previously I'd gone to the high school awards, but the, the youth awards, if you have not been to the Optimist Club, and I actually probably should get a copy of their creed, because their creed says everything that we should be about right now. And our students, the youth awards were more about service. And to look at these young people and hear their stories and just the things that they do in their schools just makes you so proud. So shout out to the Optimist Club for the work that they do in supporting our kids and celebrating that. Hope X went to that Beacon of Hope, another wonderful event. It's always great to see our students on stage and give their testimonies. And man, they were, they were excellent this year. They really brought their A-game and just, just, it makes you proud to go, I had a role in that for Lynchburg City Schools. Beauty and the Beast, I did get to, to see that. And again, our theater arts programs at both schools are fantastic. The Laurel Prom, oh, that was so sweet, right? Just to, and shout out to our students. The football team, National Honor Society, and cheerleaders, right, from Heritage, all came over along with Coach to just celebrate our kids, and it was absolutely amazing. And then just a, a nice shout out to our LEA, our, and Carl Luce and Travis Sandwich for their work with us. And we have a really great relationship with our union. They, they work with us, they bring us questions, they help us, they take back information so we could dispel any kind of rumors, and have just been wonderful partners. And we're certainly going to need those partners as we continue with the process for supporting our schools. So I just want to, you know, give them a shout out as well and just say thank you for all that.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Board comments, start from Mrs. Lowry.
I had got a very nice email, and from the Education Foundation for Senior Honors. A student I taught requested me to attend. So I will be attending, so I'm looking forward to it. Because, you know, it's a long stretch between six-year-olds and seniors. You know, so you're like, oh, so yeah, thankful that they remembered me. That was very nice.
Thank you. Dr. Carter?
Just want to say, Makaija Mason, I may have slaughtered his first name, how he just talked about the kindness of Mrs. Dawn Wise for her to just extend that kindness. And that's something that he has already made a commitment to pay forward. And sometimes those acts like that, we can be so rigid, but look at that. I mean, I thought that was just excellent. And also a shout out to Delugan Walker for his letter to the school board, you know, just recognizing our service and our commitment to help with the schools. And also with the Southern Regional Meeting with Dr. Brown being able to just come and present, and he did an outstanding job alongside with Dr. Edwards.
Thank you. Dr. Day? No comment. Mr. Tross?
Just want to thank again Mr. Dooley in the CTE program. And I also wanted to give a shout out to the students that come to speak to us at a school board meeting. It takes a lot of courage, as we've said multiple times, to get up there. And the young man, Isaiah, from the school there, and Mr. Glover from Fort Hill, thank you. I mean, it takes a lot of courage to get up there and do that, and he did it. And I wanted to commend him for getting up there and making it happen.
Mr. Andrews?
No, no comment.
I'm going to go. Mrs. Preston? Mrs. Preston, do you got a comment?
Just, just very briefly, first of all, let me apologize for not being able to be there tonight. I regret that I could not be there. Looking at all the things that, that happened during the meeting tonight, there were so many positive things. Students, teachers, faculty members, so many positive things that were said about all the good things that are happening in Lynchburg City Schools. And I hope those things will encourage us as we work together to try to alleviate some of the concerns that we have with Lynchburg City Schools and, and with the things that we're trying to do, because we're all in this together, and we're trying to support our students so that our city will grow and so that these young people can be successful. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. And in my comment, I wanted to, if you look in the forward, who do you see sitting in the audience? So SBMA didn't go wrong in recognizing these two young people. They have been, you know, going through all these three hours. And what I wanted to do was yield my time, if it's okay with you, Dr. Edwards, to two silent pillars of your strength, Mrs. Pugh and Dr. Wardka, you walked away. If you have any comments to make, I'll yield my time to you.
Well, thank you. I would just want to echo that. I'm just very proud of the work that our students are doing and that our teachers are doing. It's great to see our youngest students get up with such confidence and speak, as well as our seniors. So I'm just really proud of the work that we're, that they're doing and looking forward to our Design by Excellence plan and moving forward and really moving LCS up to the top school division that I know we can be. So I'm just, I'm grateful for the work of everybody, our leadership, but also our, our staff and our, and, and our students.
Dr. Wardka, the spotlight is on you.
Okay. So, well, just to echo that, or to echo more of that, I just appreciate all of you, and I really just, you know, the collegiality that you see among this group is really wonderful. It's, it's, you know, there's obviously differences of opinion, but there's so much good going on in the school division, and you're the leaders of it. And so I do really appreciate the opportunity to be here. One of the really cool things that we have going on in Lynchburg City Schools where we are a leader is our electric school bus program. So you may remember that about a year ago, we got a grant for twenty-five electric school buses, almost ten million dollars that we brought to the school division. We were recognized last week, specifically Hope Watts was recognized last week by Virginia Clean Cities, which is a nonprofit organization that focuses on helping cities become more environmentally sustainable, right? So I had the opportunity, since Hope was otherwise engaged, to go to Richmond, see all kinds of cool electric, electrification kinds of things that are happening in different kind of, kind of industries and learn about that. And then we got this award, which we were very sustainable in the size of our trophy as the Virginia Clean Cities Clean School Bus Champions. And I think we're, I think we're leading the state right now in our sort of percentage of, of our, of our electric, our clean school buses. I think as we make some adjustments for next school year, we'll have close to fifty percent of our school bus routes at, with electric clean school buses for next year. So really proud of that. And the drivers, they're, they're getting used to it. They're, they're kind of, kind of wary at first, like what's this going to be? But then, once they take it up a hill and they, there's electric motors turn on, they, they have a lot of torque, and so they get right up the hill and they love it, and it's going really well. So, cool. Thank you all very much.
I do have to share just a funny comment. I was meeting with parents, and one of the things that they said about the school bus and just like how the old buses, you could, you could hear them coming.
Bingo.
Know that, got to get the kids out there. They're like, man, those electric school buses are quiet. I've got to get a new system to get. So kudos to being clean and quiet.
I was thinking the same thing, Dr. Edwards. I used to listen at bus, oh, run, run to the stop.
Now there'll be an app on your.
I was telling Dr. Day, I don't want to leave Ms. Day or Ms. James you out if you have any comment to make.
I'm good.
And I apologize, I left one of the items out for discussion, that unfinished business for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So any discussion on that before we go to the informational items? The city council is still.
Yeah, we're still waiting to know what they decide. Now, Mrs. Preston, I thought had maybe some comments she wanted to make here?
Mrs. Preston, do you have any comments on the budget?
I'll be honest in saying that I was somewhat frustrated by, by the meeting that we had because I didn't feel like we really had the opportunity to express fully and completely what our perspectives are as far as, as, as budgeting is concerned. And I wish that that, that could have taken place. And I hope that we are developing a particular, before we meet with them again, a particular strategy that can be in place so that they fully understand what it is that, that we're going to do with these funds, how they're going to be used, and, and why we've determined that, that we need the funds, because it didn't seem like they were understanding all of what your perspectives are.
Are you referring?
She's talking about the joint meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Preston. Any other comments on unfinished business?
When is the April sixteenth meeting across the street?
April sixteenth.
April sixteenth.
No, I mean, what time is that? Is it like an early thing, or is it the seven-thirty?
Six PM.
Six PM. I needed to know that. Thank you.
There was adding the, there was adding news in advance yesterday, I think fourth or fifth page.
Okay. I don't get the newspaper. Mine's a little electronic. Yeah, okay.
Sorry, Ms. Lowry.
No, no, you're good. It was funny, it was funny.
Local newspaper we need to support. I buy electronic, cannot afford books. So next is informational items. Discipline review, discipline committee data review. This is not what Dr. Day was pointing out, right? Where the cell phone policy.
Two committees with discipline in their title. There's the regular discipline committee, that's the same as what's called the discipline committee data review.
That's, that's April eleventh at four PM. The next school board work section, which has been canceled now, was supposed to be on April sixteen. Now it's no more on April sixteenth. Finance and Facilities Committee is April twenty-third at three-thirty PM. And the location for all these meetings is here in the boardroom unless.
Except for the next meeting on here is exactly the same date and time, so one of those meetings will go upstairs.
Upstairs. It'll be in the same building. Academic Success Committee, April twenty-third at three-thirty PM. Ad hoc Discipline and Policy Review Committee meeting is April twenty-fifth at three-thirty, and that's the committee.
Except it's not at three-thirty, it's at four-thirty.
Four-thirty.
No, four o'clock.
Four o'clock. Thank you, thank you. Four o'clock to five-thirty.
Four o'clock. And that's the committee you talked about, the cell phone policy. And the Lacra is April thirtieth at three-thirty PM. Without any other discussion, then we are adjourned now. Thank you.